Also to Danielle, we have other people trying to get in and because the host has dropped the meeting.
No.
For all more people, we got it.
Locked, nope.
Your bottom word says lock me? Okay, there you go. And we will have probably four or five more attendees on Zoom.
You're good.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Bennett?
All right.
We'll now call the City Council regular meetings ordered for February 22nd at 6:00 PM. Please rise to an invitation and pledge allegiance. Invitation will be given by Councilwoman Jones.
Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening lifting you up, Father God. We pray, Father God, that you will lead, guide and direct us, Father God, in the mighty name of Jesus, in the way that we should go. As we assemble in this room today, Father God, look upon each and every person that is in here, Father God, so that we can come together as in unity and in bond, Father God, or touch every heart that's in this room, Father God. And whatever we do, we do it for the glory of God. We ask you to, Father God, bless this city of Avon Park, the city known as the city of Charme, and bless the people that are in it, Father God, that the decisions that we make today, Father God, will be pleasing unto you, Father God, and be lined up with your will, in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen, amen, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe see it. Madam Burke, you'll please call Roy.
Councilmember Gray here. Councilmember Johnson here. Councilmember Sullivan here. Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good. Once again, we have with us the FAM management group, LLC. JT. You're more than welcome to take it away.
All right, well, thank you to the council. It's good to be here and have another opportunity to share with you folks what we're trying to bring and provide to the city of Charme. So with that, we'll get right to it. We prepared a little trailer video for you guys. And then we have 11 speakers. They'll call back to back all the different trades or disciplines where they can provide a different perspective of value.
Okay. Who's here?
I'm not sure we're connected.
While we're hoping to do it on thumb drive, so would you play right from your audio?
Understood. That would have been too easy.
So how do we do the way with the audio?
You could put a microphone on your speaker perhaps? And on the backbeat, do you mean?
It doesn't backbeat, okay. Yeah, come back in. Not my zoom off on this.
Kind of an overview since the last meeting, basically you guys took the feedback of the council that you heard. You see that you made some more recommendations to a new proposal there. And I'm assuming the video kind of outlined some of that as well as talks a little bit further about your company, right?
Yeah, well, the outline is really, you know, we're essentially a private economic development group. So there's many facets and subtenants that we're trying to be bringing here that complements what, you know, what the asset that you'll have. And yes, we took into account Y'all's feedback as much as we can to, well, y'all know, I mean, we're open to suggestions. Not trying to compete here.
Can we give it a roll one more time?
All right.
Welcome to Florida Airport Management. We are a Florida-based company and bring decades of combined experience in aviation, technology and logistics to your community. We achieve this by facilitating a unique mix of tenants with tricky services to include master plan, design, building, financing and maintenance offerings that save time and money for municipalities to achieve long-term economic development goals for rural communities. Our vision is to develop a three-tiered economy center, 200 mile regional expansion and expansion program. As experienced developers and operators, our team will provide new infrastructure at airports and for the imagination of existing sites. Our mission aims to diversify the employment base in rural communities at regional airports with ongoing innovation, while preserving the farmland assets and merging high-tech with this sector. Florida Airport Management puts a cross section of emergency services and emerging agro technologies into one location to support existing farmers with alternative crop support systems. We enhance this model by creating a pipeline for new job creation on the front and back end of our production offerings. Over the past 150 years, we have seen Florida's economy evolve from primarily agrarian to include high-tech business incubators. At the event of World War II, the nation would focus its efforts to first establish, grow as needed, a home for aviation training and new technologies to support the nation's military and civil programs focused on aviation and aerospace. Areas that were chosen to locate these national civil and military programs continued to thrive as they experienced high-tech job growth and population expansion. The regions once known as mosquito and elachium counties became incubators for high-tech jobs. The state of Florida, through its pro-business economic attraction efforts, served to preserve and grow 10,000 high-tech jobs in these communities. Over the last half-century, rural areas of Florida have experienced an economic decline as generations of young adults are attracted to higher centers of learning where they have the opportunity to train and look at higher skilled jobs. Florida has experienced a rebirth with high-tech-made factory and aerospace-related companies. There is an opportunity to develop a high-tech industrial culture by the means from historic Avon Park main streets. Following through other reasons like Florida Airport Management will be a perfect conduit to help your community appreciate commerce for you. Florida's major colleges and universities are focused on science and research and within a 170-mile radius. This gives FAM and Avon Park access to the workforce and ability to harness and capture talent that will be the future of Avon Park. The immediate market shows a young demographic with low income per capita. FAM or its tenants that provide an average wage of $20 per hour with potential to grow and develop by creating a pipeline for existing youth with cross-training and upward growth capability. Biotech positions average $50,000 per year. Florida is the world's premier intermodal gateway with a strategic intermodal system that provides logistical advantages for businesses. Florida Airport Management is the perfect mission partner for your community's economic growth. FAM is currently seeking opportunities to partner and launch facilities and containers. This location enables the city of Avon Park to engage with their leader in emerging biotech. Our mission dovetails with Avon Park's future land use maps and the approved FAA master plan. FAM also plans to bring emergency services to the Avon Park Executive Airport while maintaining this existing general use for the local recreational and professional clients. And lastly, the local land's distribution of biotech and bio-based products that will be available for startups and businesses will help to attract a modern industry and regional brand for Avon Park. Its streamlined products similarly creates from locally grown foods to the bottom table movement to have locally grown bio crops will be to provide to small business people. Look forward to these bio-based aquatic lines to make up the bio business unit. Avon Park, a future bioeconomy zone supporting the Fiera region and the heartland of Florida, where we lay its anchors.
I hope y'all heard most of that. Heard strike you, I don't know if you heard or not.
Heard the majority of it, yeah.
All right. So, you know, a few things that we wanted to focus on today was that, you know, kind of bigger picture of what we're trying to achieve here. Also, you know, first on our list, we heard a lot, you know, from Councilman Gray, you know, how's this going to benefit the community? And so we wanted to go into some of the statistics of Avon Park, what the at-risk youth have to look forward to, you know, based on, you know, based, how many, what are the demographics of degree folks, what are the demographics on SNAP benefits, things of that nature? And how do we actually try to lift, which is roughly, you know, 34% of Avon Park is under food stamps for the inability to get a high-paying job. And so we wanted to touch first on the community of what those are and how we can get back. So, over to Nicole.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Yeah. So on behalf of Florida Airport Management, we'd like to thank you once again for arranging us to present our final presentation prior to voting on a motion to see if we will be moving forward with a partnership with the city of Avon Park at the Executive Airport. For the past five months, we have been analyzing and performing due diligence for several surrounding communities within the Fiera region. What we are seeing and like about Avon Park is that there is a historic agrarian element that can be nurtured and evolved with our multidisciplinary team, including our experts, aviators, and our unique tenant myths, partners and investors. What we know is Avon Park's potential workforce consists of 5,700 with 3,500 reported employees. An additional 1,000 youth are disconnected, or in other terms, not attending college or school or are currently unemployed between the ages of 16 and 19. Out of a population of 10,300, 3,500 are living at or below poverty, which is 33%. We understand that from K to 12, there are 2,800 students being pipelined to possibly exit and go off to college, not go to college, and may possibly leave for unemployment outside the city, sometimes outside of the state. Florida Airport Management can be the conduit to raise these workforce figures and lower the exodus of those who leave and not return. In addition, the offerings from Avon Park's current employers with regards to job positions are not substantial with regards to businesses as we discover a zero job growth and zero expansion rate with those companies. FAM's unique mix of emerging technologies, tenants and statewide strategic plan will easily raise that percentage in the next year alone. The value we offer is direct to the community in programming, educational training and the creation of jobs, plus creating the incubation for a new small business to form. In order to accomplish our goals with the city, there are minimum requirements that we need to get on the drawing board for a P3 contract. For example, the construct at a minimum 30-year lease with performance measures and timeline with exit clauses for both FAM and the city. This will allow Florida Airport Management to go forward with our sub- loans that will bolster any FAA loans. Our tenant operations are complex and robust given the technology and scale, and they will need long-term funding to pay off staff, equipment and run operations over that 30-year period. This is good for the city in that it shows long-term commitment from our tenants. FAM's lease agreement will help us create turnkey, fast-track development agreements that perform much faster and can be erected in a shorter timeframe without external third and fourth-party planning, design and project direction and management typically required for development. Our mix requires the integration of the FBO and the synergistic benefits of utilizing our entire team for the benefit of the community. This economic development strategy cannot be refuted. We, what we are proposing is a commitment which is not piecemeal and requires substantial upfront costs and relocation and travel for much of our team. FAM has agreed to turn over assets at the end of the 30 years. This is our win-win-win structure we offer to all our tentative partner cities. Our team will operate in accordance with local, state and federal laws. And in that note, I will hand the next piece over to Santiago Fernandez, who has extensive planning experience for most of all the municipality airports in the state of Florida. He and I worked extensively 20 years ago at the Greater Orlando Aviation Authority with all the divisions, including planning, design, review, facility maintenance and operations under an owner's representative contract. This gives you an indication of the continuity and longevity of career expertise over 30 years in design, planning and economic development.
Thank you. One second, before something, I guess that means I got it, apologies.
No problem.
Okay. So we're seasoned planners. As Nicole said, we've worked all over Florida. You're going to see some of those examples right now. Anecdotally, I have obviously over 30 years, the stories to tell from their experience, their airport experiences. So next one. So you see here, that's one of the latest ones I work with, Apalachicola, Vero Beach, Kissimmee Gateway. And one of my most current projects is the front gate at NASA, guiding their land development program in front of NASA for all high-tech companies to come there. So the closest one that I see to you, your airport anecdotally, is Kissimmee Gateway. And it wasn't a variant city and fundamentally evolved, has evolved over time, traveling tourism has helped it to grow a little bit, but the economy's still very lacking. And the same situation is happening where out of the 1.2 million non-agricultural jobs that are there, 900,000 of those folks are coming in from neighboring counties, Seminole County, Orange County. So there's no return there for that community itself. So what we did, so I'll go ahead and move to the next slide. The way we plan around airports, and that's an example of Sanford Airport, we try to bring commercialized efforts to their facilities. We work very closely with them in their real estate and land development program and oftentimes even working on as a management team to help them move forward. That's Melbourne Airport. A lot of people could realize that in 2014, the largest economic development effort in the country came to Melbourne Airport with Northrop Grumman, the center of excellence. So it's an, it becomes an agglomeration of firms. We call it, welcome to the neighborhood. We have Embraer out there, Northrop Grumman, Lockheed Martin, Harris Corporation. So the, we have our own kind of methodology. So your typical planning in alignment with FAA has certain guidelines it has to follow and procedures, planning and inventories, et cetera, getting to capital improvement structure, program structure. What we do next with our plans is we think like a developer. We plan like a developer. So it's all about rents at that point. In other words, the idea is to know whether that land has value to a certain commercialized effort. So we, again, we do it as a realist, we do it not as a real estate agent, but we do it as a commercial real estate broker. And then, and then lastly, which is one of my favorite things, is to work closely with mission partners, Enterprise Florida, Space Florida. And that's the Northrop Grumman effort you see there was to bring them to the airport. And they have, they have a specialized district, they're a specialized district in their own, for Space Florida, where they're an agent for conduit financing for products. Let's move to the next one. Okay, and so that's Orlando International Airport. They have 8,000 acres of property surrounding that airport. So I was in charge of the strategic land development program for Orlando International Airport. And we use those devices, the three-point project, and that's NASA. So NASA, what we did was we broke them up into area development zones of like uses. They had never done that before. The government had never done, the government just kind of, federal, they just kind of had a lot of land and they just kept putting things wherever there was extra land. And so what we did was organize NASA at Kennedy Space Center, for instance, and we created area development plans, development zones. We actually did a capital improvement project based on what we thought might come there over time so that they had an alignment for funding sources that would come from the federal government to them and their NASA budget to be distributed. So the biggest thing that, you see big airports, you see a spaceport, you see a small airport, and it's all the same at airports. And the owner, the operator often thinks that the property that they have, because it's an airport and you have airfield assets, you might have some hangars, those kinds of, because it's an airport, the land is worth so much money. But what we find is because of all the externalities, that's what we call overlays, restrictions, FAA requirements, oftentimes it's not an ideal location for traditional real estate commercial venture. So what we try to do is bring special tenants to these airports. And again, towards the economic development factor, that's one of my favorite things to do. But move to the next slide. And so this, this is what we did for Kissimmee. We brought, we brought Space Florida, Florida High Tech Corner. We brought Enterprise Florida, Workforce Florida. We brought representatives from Alачa College, UCF. The school board, we brought a representative from Ridge to the room. And we envisioned the future of Kissimmee Gateway together. And I'll, so what we wanted to, what we were focused on was jobs, jobs, jobs. Raise, we call her Sarah, raise Sarah here, trainer here, from a STEM, from inception, from a STEM program standpoint in schools, in the lower schools, to get them ready for the high-tech jobs. And we hope to do that here with you. And with that.
That would be Casey.
Thank you, Santiago. Next, we'll have Casey Roberts here, we have Jerry Roberts, he's joining us from Oklahoma right now. He's going to go over some of the financial analysis that we've done over the airport for the last five years and really show how we believe that our resources and assets can benefit to see some tremendous growth there. Go ahead, Casey.
Yes, thank you. Can you guys hear me clear? Am I loud enough, not loud enough?
Yes.
Terrific, thank you. Mayor, Board, I appreciate you giving us the time. Specifically, I wanted to point out a couple of things. First, we asked for some due diligence items, specifically these financials that had to do with the airport fund specifically. We were also given the opportunity to look at some of the general fund items and some other accounts to be able to try to balance out and understand where the airport is getting its monies from and what direction it's going for the future. Now, we did use the airport master plan to gain a look at to what they projected when they created that master plan. And what we did is we kind of compared these two, meaning the numbers that you provided us for actuals and what that projected showed for the master plan. And really, that's where I wanted to go. So Nicole, if you could stop right here really quick, this is slide two. I apologize, go back to slide two. As you can see, top left, it says airport on the left-hand side are all the accounts. And then you can see what I have there highlighted is the 16, 17, 18, 19, and the year-to-date 20 actuals for projected numbers, what you got, excuse me, not projected, actual numbers of what you have. And on the left-hand side, you can see what they're attached to. I'm not going to spend a lot of time because we could be here forever having to go through each piece. Can you go to slide three, please, Nicole? This is, again, what you guys provided us as far as financials are concerned, concerning the airport fund. Below, it shows what you guys have highlighted for 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 and 6. And the reason we highlighted those is because I wanted you to know where we got our numbers so that when we go back to slide one, you'll understand how we came to what we came to. And it wasn't something that we created, it was not anything we did, it was all based off of what you guys have so far. So if you could go back to, I apologize, stay here on slide three really quick. I want to identify on point three, it says eliminate rehab of runway 4238, which that runway does not exist, but I believe it was for taxiway Foxtrot, which was $1.8 million. And it's highlighted down there in number three. I'm sorry, say that again?
That was incorrect. 423 was renamed to 52.
Got you. So it was 523, and that money was spent, correct?
Yes.
Understood. All right, so if you can go back to slide one, please. So this is the Excel we did, taking, extrapolating every number that you guys had, identifying where the monies came from. If you'll notice, every year was in the red except for one year. And that was in 2018, and that's identified down at the bottom of the slide where it says net income of the airport. The reason that year you guys had a net income, as you can see, there was FAA grants of $1.3 million and then insurance reimbursements of $625,000, which is the reason for having so much available monies, which I guess led to being able to spend it on that airport runway, or excuse me, redone for 52, like she just mentioned. So taking everything we have and showing you guys your numbers, this is what we came to. And of course, this is bringing in depreciation and your counter expenses and everything that you guys showed on your expenses. Year-to-date, you can see most of it, three years out of the four, we're all in the negative and only one was positive because of FAA and DOT grants, or excuse me, FAA and insurance claims. Go ahead to the next slide, should be slide four. Okay, this comes straight out of your guys' airport, the main airport guide. You can see here that these are the projected airport revenues at the time and expenses. Down at the bottom, you'll notice the cumulative income is a very, very low number. And then it's supposed to increase, although we have Okay, this comes straight out of your guys' airport, the main airport guide. You can see here that these are the projected airport revenues at the time and expenses. Down at the bottom, you'll notice the cumulative income is a very, very low number. And then it's supposed to increase all the way up to 98,300 in year 2020. And that's just because of monies you're getting in from the FAA, which it'll show on the left-hand side there. It says non-operating revenues. Nicole, if you can go back really quick. Non-operating revenues, you see state grants and federal grants. And you can see why in the beginning you were, you got large sums of money, starting at 2.0 million dollars, 2.1 million dollars, then decreasing to 39, and then 600. Again, those are all projected for the years 17, 18, 19, and 20. What really actually happened is something completely different. But what I, I did want to point out is even you guys were showing that you wanted to have an increase in those total incomes. Go to the next slide after that, slide six, please, Nicole. This here is the projected and matches to what those numbers were that was in the airport, airport guide. And it, it, these graphs were built off of that. Now, if you look, even in though, even when it was projected, it showed that the total annual revenue was going to match almost exactly the total annual expenses, which is not an increase in any type of revenue whatsoever. It just meant that you were going to put something down and it was going to increase for the moment from 2017 to 2018. And then you can see that it completely started to decrease from 2018 to 2020, which is what I spoke about last time we had this meeting of seeing a need at the Avon Executive Airport. Go ahead, Nicole, to the next slide. So this again comes out of your master plan. In addition to public-private partnerships and third-party financing, airports sometimes use standard open market financing mechanisms such as bonding and/or commercial paper. We just wanted to point it out because this is exactly what we're trying to be. We're not trying to do a land grab. This is trying to be a public-private partnership as per your own airport diagram or airport management. Next slide. As you can see, one of the things we have here are two, two points that we wanted to point out was construction, new commercial terminal and/or cargo facilities, specifically cargo facilities when it comes to our tenants or subleases. That's what we're trying to bring to the airport. We're not trying to build, to do a new construction of the airport, but we are trying to revitalize it by bringing in those, those funds. Next slide, Nicole. So one of the ways that you get EDA grant funding is by public-private partnerships. And that's for long-term coordinating collaborator, regional economic development approaches, which is exactly what we're trying to do. Innovation and competitiveness, entrepreneurship and strategies, investments connect regional economies with the worldwide marketplace. Again, straight out of your master plan, that's what we're trying to bring to you. Not just a simple lease of running what you currently have and trying to continue forward with what your plans were because they weren't enough. We're trying to do more and bring what this says needs to happen to bring a benefit to the airport and the community around you guys. And as you can see, the EDA grants are competitive federal grant processes and below is what they can be put towards. If you guys want to give that a read for a second, I don't have to go through all of it. Next slide, Nicole. All right, if you can hold there one moment, I do want to point out one more thing that was not in one of the slides. It went with one of the graphs we have. This is straight out of your master plan and it states that additional revenues could be realized through a more revenue-enhanced approach to operation and development where the airport receives a percentage of fuel flowage and/or aviation-related commercial sites. Further, the undeveloped and underutilized land areas on the airport represent the greatest opportunity to generate significant revenues through ground leases and/or the construction and leasing of hangars and other airport facilities. The success of the airport to implement and capitalize on aviation and non-aviation development opportunities will determine its ability to increase reserve and contingency accounts and maximize the overall positive economic impact of the airport to the community. And that is a direct quote, nine dash four summary from the master plan. So we are trying, that's exactly what we're trying to bring. We're not just trying to keep the status quo. We're trying to add to the ground that you guys currently have to make it a successful airport operation. On the FAA note, I have spoken directly with Mr. Miguel Martinez out of the Orlando FAA side. And their biggest concern is making sure that all airports become self-sustainable. And what that means is asking as little money as possible from the FAA or DOT to ensure that, that those funds can be allocated to other areas that are needed throughout the country and other airports. So the whole point is to be able to create an economic driving division at the airport that needs less and less government funds over a period of time. Now, that doesn't mean that it'll, it'll completely take away. That's, that would be full privatization, and that's not what we're trying to do. We want to make sure that we stay in that public-private partnership with the city so that you guys can still have the airport. It'd still be a part of what you guys have going on and not something that just fam is running all willy-nilly. So if you guys have any questions, please let me know. Otherwise, I'm going to hand it off to the next presenter. Thank you.
You made a comment that you spoke to Mr. Martinez out of the Orlando office. Now, what you say, his goal is to eliminate over a period of time the cities or municipalities of using federal funds for enhancements, but you don't plan on doing that. You plan on continuing on using those federal funds to enhance airport infrastructure, am I correct?
We, we have to in, in, we have, we have to in the beginning for sure. It's something that we want to try to reduce over time because we're never going to see that air, I, we, I don't think we ever foresee your airport becoming an Orlando International Airport because it's so close to there. What we do want to do is create an economic driving force, though. So what would happen is more funds go to you guys and, meaning the city, and less goes, comes from the federal or you guys having to give us back. Meaning it, it becomes less reliant on needing all the funds from you guys and from the federal side and more that it becomes self-reliant. And every now and then, now and again, we say, hey, we're going to need, you know, this amount of funds every five-year AIP plan. We're going to need this much to increase the length, increase the size, improve the runway space, the taxiways, things that are going to get broken down over time anyways. So those are the only things we'll have to go for. The, the thing I'm talking about specifically is that having to go to the city for funds from maybe their general fund to do things out on the airport that aren't, that are airport-related but not general fund-related and that we're having to borrow. We see that that's what's happened in your guys' numbers and we want to make sure that that's not what happens. The airport gets to take care of its own issues and own problems out of its own fund, thus allowing the general fund and the rest of the funds the city has to flourish without having to participate in the airport fund.
In other words, can tax dollars be better spent somewhere else because the airport is now self-sufficient?
Yeah, but you mean tax dollars as in general fund tax dollars, but you still will pursue FAA and DOT grants to subsidize your, your efforts of doing your business there? I mean, that's just, you need.
Yes.
Okay, so I don't know where this question goes, but I thought you all were going to be using USDA loans to do enhancements and things like that. You haven't gotten there? Okay, so you still will rely on DOT and FAA as we do for enhancements to the airport, to improve its infrastructure and, you know, repair, build, whatever, runways, taxiways and all that? Okay.
Well, let me just ask, let me just ask the question. So we're saying that and you said what you're saying. You will pursue the, the government grants, what, what you call, but you will be able to utilize this by understanding at a much expensive cost than any, than we could give in the city.
Absolutely.
Pretty much.
Yes, ma'am. With our multidisciplinary team here, there's pretty much nothing that we cannot do at house. We have legal, engineering, planning, design, construction.
Got you.
You know, but yes, we.
Do you have any further questions for Mr. Roberts?
No.
Go ahead, Nicky.
All right, thanks, sir. Next, on our agenda tonight, we're going to have a hometown local Jeff Williams, Pete on farming perspective.
Thank you, Mayor. See, Commissioner, thank you for allowing us to be here today. Of course, you know who I am. Don't hold it against me, but I was born here in Avon Park, raised here. And I want to apologize for it, but I'm a God-fearing man. I raised my family that way. And when I stand here before you today, if I'm doing something that's not right, I know I have to answer to a higher power, okay, a lot higher than y'all. So trust me, I'm not here to attack anyone. This, this company, this fam is not here to bring any hardship on anyone. Or I wouldn't be sitting at the table, that's, that's for sure. No, I don't know anything about running an airport. Don't claim to know anything about running an airport, okay? That's what these other guys here that are with me have a lot of experience in. And I rely on them to help me move forward in my business as a farmer. Now, saying that I don't have any airport knowledge, I still love to fly. I remember one of my first flights with one of the gentlemen's out there at the airport many, many years ago, almost 40, which I hate to tell you how many it really was, but out of all the things in my life that I remember doing, that's one of the things that I remember just like it was yesterday. And I have a lot of respect for that gentleman. He's a dear friend of ours and, and thanks to him and others. My son started flight school last February, February 10th and is now a certified flight instructor. He just called me today, we just talked to him. He's getting ready for a flight instructor interview this week over at Marin Island. So we're excited about him, you know, being able to increase his hours by teaching other people how to fly. And naturally, if there was an opportunity here locally for him to come back one day so he could raise that grandchild just like my other one's up here now, Alexis Yana, her and her husband Mason and my grandson Rollins are listening then. And we hope one day we can, I imagine everybody would like for your grandsons, your grandkids to be here living with you locally. And I would love to have that here with him. Three main reasons why I'm here tonight, and that is because I'm a farmer. I believe that if I can help Mr. Clark and his amazing team, that I can, I can help bring some revenue or help bring some jobs back into this area for the farmers like myself that are here in the room with me that have suffered from the greening disease for the last four, five years. And just to give you some statistics on that. And back in 2016, personally, I lost 75% of our citrus fruit. And the state of Florida lost somewhere in the range of 71%. This year alone for 2020, 2021, some farmers right now in Hollis County have reported to me from Hollis County Citrus growers that they've lost anywhere from 45 to 60% of premature fruit hitting the ground that they cannot pick up, they cannot use it. So we're still struggling to overcome this disease called greening disease. And it is not pretty. And so I am looking for a way to diversify without the threats of imports coming in from other countries that's going to jeopardize me from being able to sell and make a profit. I would like to be able to pay my bills. I would like to be able to keep my farm. But I'm excited about this new rising entity of hemp throughout the state of Florida. The governors recognized it. The Commissioner of Agriculture, Nikki Fried, has recognized it. She has approved it. And myself and Zach Farv, who's with us tonight, a young, often manure, that went to school with my, my daughter and her husband Mason, approached me back in July and said, hey, Mr. Williams, you know anybody that has a greenhouse? I said, yeah, I have two of them. Why? He said, I'd like to be able to grow hemp. So since that conception, Zach and I both have grown, we're in our second growth period right now of producing hemp. And it's for mainly to help people with illnesses that they need to get the help from. I'm really a big supporter of this product because of the fact that the opioid overdoses that are known to this country and to the state, that I see some really, real good benefits from the use of this product. And that's just one area where we can use this product. There's many, there's 50,000 different uses that we can use this product for. And the main thing is how can it help our local farmers? Trust me, if we can get this thing put together, we can have a place to go take it to so it can be processed and moved out of this area and utilized. It's going to help our farmers in this region, not just in the city of Avon Park. It's going to help the farmers in this region. So I'd like for you to take that into consideration. In closing, my relationship with all pilot-owned personnel out at the airport, great people, great friends. Spoke to Dr. Danzy tonight as he was coming in. Wish him well in their endeavor and coming forth tonight. But I have nothing but the utmost respect for them. And I assured him, I said, this is not a, this is not a takeover. This is not anything that's going to impact you, your kids, your grandkids. My grandkids is not going to do anything to impact them in a negative way or I will not stand behind it. I want our kids and I want our grandkids to be able to go in there, work, fly, own an aircraft and whatever they want to do without some private company telling them they can't do anything. So that's not what we're all about. So for that, thank you very much for taking the time to listen to me. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Next on our dinner night to speak would be Mayor Jose Alvarez.
You know, like the title follows you, even when you retire. Try to put it away and follow it everywhere you go. My name is Jose Alvarez and I just retired as the mayor of Kissimmee in November 17. I served two terms in my city and I really enjoyed it. My background is in real estate. I've been in real estate for over 20 years. Past president of my Association of Realtors and been involved in lobbying for property rights in the Zadowski Trust Fund for over 14 years in Tallahassee. And earlier in my career, I was with the Florida Department of Transportation in South Florida for many years. But what a lot of people don't know is that I was born and raised in a farm. I grew up in the agricultural business. My dad, at the age of 87, still farms his land in South Florida. We own 150 acres of land. And you know, through the years, I've seen farmers suffer as years continue to progress here in Florida. With us, in the middle 80s, we had to reshape our farm and what we were doing in agriculture and actually had to turn our farms to be able to survive and feed his, our family into a plant nursery. If you drive to South Florida on the turnpike, 826, 836, wherever you see those beautiful palm trees, they come from our farm. And so we had to go from regular agriculture, farming, into becoming growing plants for a living. And you know, this is something that caught my attention when I was approached by HAM is the opportunity to bring business back into the farmers. Your community is highly based on these farmers. And this is what we want to improve, just part of it, of what we want to improve. When I got elected in the city of Kissimmee in 2012, I said to my council, and I quote, and all our meetings are recorded, I said to them, out of every piece of real estate that we own, the best piece of property we own is that airport. And we have to make sure that it becomes an economic development engine. And so that was my target. Apart from creating a medical district in the city of Kissimmee that is now the third-largest medical district in the state of Florida. So economic development is the survival of our communities and the future of our kids. Because this is what retains them, just to want to stay here in our hometown, right? We've seen too many of our kids graduate and leave. I have five daughters. Most of them are law enforcement in the military and their husbands also. But guess what? Family business was real estate, it all became realtors. That was the family business. I wanted to see my kids stay here in their hometown. And that's what we want to see here in Avon Park. Kissimmee Gateway Airport, and the gentleman here said very well, it was struggling. But I probably say to you that when I retire from the city of Kissimmee, Kissimmee Gateway Airport brings over $190 million in revenue to the city and the county and is still growing. And because of the growth that we've had in our airport, the FAA has raided our municipal airport into a national municipal airport. How about that? It took a lot of work. That comes with the sale of fuel, landing and taking off from the airports, how much business we were able to provide and how much jobs we were able to create. How much business we were able to provide and how much jobs we were able to create. Right now, the city of Kissimmee, when I left there, we were getting ready to do a new master plan because we have over a hundred and forty acres, because we used to have in our Kissimmee Gaywood Airport, a beautiful golf course. FAA hated that golf course, right? So it's something that every time I went to DC and visited the FAA, Mayor, when you didn't rail that airport. Well, we finally did, and now we have over a hundred and forty acres that we're going to add in a brand new master plan. And guess what that's going to be? That's going to be an industrial aviation park. Imagine the creation of jobs and revenues and new tax base that it's going to create for our city and our county. This is our goal for Avon Park Airport. You know, I've been to a lot of, I've served a lot of boards, local, state and national board from the national legal mayor to the Florida legal mayors. I've served them all. I've sat in utility boards because we have a utility company. And one thing that you want to see wherever you travel, let's say here in the state of Florida, cities that are lucky enough to have a municipal airport, the successful ones are self-deficient. Funding for an airport should never come from your regular base, your regular budget, right? That airport should be self-deficient. That's what we're bringing to this airport. We want to make sure that this airport is self-sufficient. Are we going to go after the FAA for any type of grants or FDOT as we grow that airport? Of course we have to, but guess what? We won't be knocking on the door of the city of Avon Park to say, Mr. City Manager, we need some funds from your general funds to run this airport. Now, we would never do that. We would never do that. So our goal is to make sure that as we bring all our partners to the airport, and mind you, I know I heard before that it said they're going to come in, tear up the runways, put all kind of different facilities, we will still be under the eye of the FAA. See, the FAA will not allow any company to do anything with that airport that is not aviation-related. And so we want to make sure that you understand that, that whatever we're going to do is approved and it has a seal of approval from the FAA. As we bring more companies into the airport, the job base will grow, your tax revenue will grow, and we will make sure that the Kissimmee, that Kissimmee, that the Avon Park, I got Kissimmee, that the Avon Park Aviation Airport becomes the economic development engine that this city and county needs to be able to attract businesses. I'm going to tell you one of the little secrets we had when we started approaching and I'll let it go. You know, you can't give a politician a microphone. One of the issues we had in our airport, and a lot of airports have it, is as you try to, with economic development, we try to approach businesses to come to your airport. You invite them, come on down. We have all this property, right? Come on down. Here's the first question that they throw at you. And you could ask anyone in economic development that they will tell you, where's my workforce? Where's my workforce? And that was the hiccup when I got into the city. Companies were telling us, I would go to all this type of events of aviation. And the first thing was, where's my workforce? So we did economic development backwards. We created a section of our airport of aviation schools. Now we were able to go into these companies and say, we're growing your workforce. And they started coming and they started growing. Kissimmee Gaywood Airport still has a lot more to do. And it's continuing in the right path and hopefully the new administration continues the right path that we just left them to do. I really hope, because I don't want to go back. And this is what our goals are for Avon Park Airport. We're not here to do any type of takeover. We don't want to privatize this airport. We want to make sure that it becomes an economic engine, not only for the airport and the city, but the entire county. And that way, we're able to also attract other companies that want to move into Avon Park. You see, right now, sorry to say this, don't take it personal, you have nothing to offer. You have nothing to offer. We have the same issue in Kissimmee. You have to make sure that you show a path of growth for a company to get up from where they're at and move in your community. And don't look at that economic engine only for the city. Think of it as the entire county. Think of it as the creation of new jobs, new opportunities in your community. And when you go to sleep tonight, you know, Kissimmee was the second largest city in central Florida. And Mayor, you know, it's a tough job, right? Because we go to sleep with concerns of our constituents and we wake up with it, right? Because our email starts ringing and our phone keeps going and everyone has a problem. And the idea is to create new jobs, better salaries, better life. In return, they spend it here. The companies that come here, the employees that those companies bring apart from the ones they're going to hire from here, that's where they're going to live. They're going to live here. They're going to buy homes here. You know, I work as a private consultant for developers. And I go, hey, guys, how about building some developments in Avon Park? Avon where? That side. And so we want to work in partnership with you, Mayor, members of the diocese and the city manager, to make sure that we put Avon Park in the map. There's a lot of experience in this group. You know, I was sad at the last meeting, I was sitting right over there in the corner. And our reputations and our experience were questioned, no question. I can tell you that with the experiences this team brings, you cannot hire anybody from this team. And we're not asking you to hire us. We're asking you to allow us to come in and work side by side with you to grow this community and to make it a much better. Mayor, thank you so much for your time, members of the diocese and city manager. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jose. Next, we're going to go virtual to Zach Farr, joining us from Tampa, Florida today. He's one of our directors, one of our, you know, part of our brain trust and a hometown mayor.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Awesome. All right, well, obviously, very quick. First off, I just want to appreciate the council for giving me this time. I want to just give you guys a shout out for allowing us to have the LC 5K last two weeks ago. That was a great turnout. It's, it's easy to, I mean, you can just, you can hear the passion in the room from every party. Everybody has good intentions going forth about this. So the one word that gets thrown around a lot is a partnership. I encourage all the parties involved to just come to some, just, you know, come to a conclusion. I, Nicole, you did an awesome job with that presentation as well. I know you worked really hard on that. These, American Hemp Manufacturing, I've had the opportunity to be working with them for about two years now, watched them grow. And I mean, they offered me a job in Avon Park if this was to go into effect. And in the beginning of two thousand twenty, I actually quit my job in Miami and moved home looking for something in Avon Park. I mean, it's my hometown. Obviously, the city's behind economic development and behind the students that go to school there. But there, you know, there is still there a gap in, in opportunity for work. So I was able, I was very lucky to work with Jeff on a hemp project. And that being said, you know, the hemp industry is going to be happening in Florida with or without anybody involved in this, in this group. So, but we had the opportunity and the team, and I'm talking about everybody at this meeting, to really put an impact on a future five hundred billion dollar industry. I mean, we're at the beginning stages of it. There's a lot of uncertainty, but with the teams, everybody involved, I think that there's a lot of opportunity in Avon Park, Florida. So, I mean, two of the largest, two of the, as you said, you can say, two of the more promising businesses in Highlands County right now, None Better Health, which is a CBD company, and One Planet, which is also in the cannabis industry. And they're all, they're, so, you know, I'll just leave it at that. I appreciate you guys taking the time. And along with that, we're, American Hemp Manufacturing is already wanting me to include young farmers and ranchers and as well as the South Florida State College as well. So they're, they're really trying to bring in the community involvement. So, but Avon, I understand where Avon Park, the council's coming from too. So I just ask that, you know, we make something happen sooner rather than later. And that's it. I appreciate you guys taking, allowing me the time.
Ted Everett offered his CRA meeting. I don't see him. We'll circle back. He's the chairman of Opportunity Florida, Ten County Railroad Coalition. Mr. Towne, would you like to? Y'all got his resume last time here, treasurer of the Tri-County Airport. And if I may introduce you, sir, was also management as Colonel Towne. I won't age you, Jim, about when you restored howitzers and planes here back after World War Two and how life, it's funny how it comes full circle. So you could provide oversight many, many years later. But with that, you know, I'd just like for you to share how your contribution can help.
Okay, have I got audio?
Yes.
Okay. I'm new to the team, partly because the last three and a half years, I've been the treasurer of Tri-County Airport Authority. We're a special independent district. The three counties that appoint our board members have no governance responsibility for us. We're a standalone, make it on our own type of operation. The airport is very similar in size to Avon Park in terms of revenue, aircraft operations, so forth. In the last three and a half years, we've put a little over three million dollars of improvements into the airport. We've got about five point six million dollars coming at us in the next five-year plan. Last year, we completed our master plan that's reviewed by the FAA now. So in addition to that, I, I've been flying since nineteen sixty-two. So I've been around airplanes all my life, have the usual licenses and so forth. I'm not an active pilot right now due to my health circumstances. I can't get a medical, but that's, doesn't diminish my interest in airports or aviation at all. In addition, I've been involved up here in the central panhandle and putting together a group of two counties and a city to do a fifteen hundred and forty-nine acre development south of I-ten along Highway seventy-nine. We've got three million dollars worth of sewer and water. That's two point three miles under construction right now. That took us five years to pull those three governments together. But we finally did it and we got our money from an appropriation at the legislature and the government's jobs bill. So it, it's not a dream, it's a reality. I was a financial advisor to a development of regional impact some years ago for thirty-one hundred new homes. We nearly doubled had it been built out completely, our Ed Valorm tax base. So I'm very active in, in the central panhandle area and economic development. And I think that's what some of the fellows that are already on the board have been operating a small airport successfully and we're making a lot of progress. I'm proud to be part of this group. This is the third meeting I've attended and I learn something new every time about the background of these people. And, and I'm astounded. I wish I'd known some of them three and a half years ago when I got started in airport management. But JT mentioned, at one time, I was chief of logistics for the eighty-first Army Reserve Command, which at the time was the largest reserve command covering eight states. And we had an aviation helicopter maintenance facility at Avon Park. And I've been in and out of there a good bit over the years. So unless there are any questions, I'll yield the floor.
Any questions for Mr. Towne? All right, thank you, sir. We got Charlie Brown.
All right, my name is Charlie Brown Jr. I was born at Walker Memorial Hospital right here in Avon Park. My mom was born here, her mom was born here. And her dad, Martin Evans, one of her favorite stories, was one of the Masons that worked on the city hall in nineteen twenty-nine. So I am connected to this city, born and bred, a red double. I lettered three different sports while attending high school here. Served as state president representing Avon Park. And I say all that to let you know that, you know, this isn't just a bunch of outsiders coming into this community trying to take over or something like that. This is a part of what I always dreamed as a, as a young child, as a, as many politician while I was growing up, how we would redefine and transform the city. And it made me think about some of the past successes that, you know, happened, whether it was the military investment during World War Two or citrus boom that created a lot of wealth and a lot of jobs in this community. You know, my mom was here tonight. She needs to pick, you know, orange, orange is the color of school clothes and everything like that. So we're connected to the department. But what I've noticed, even from when I grew up and when she was a kid and different things like that, is that the current situation has deteriorated. I've lost friends personally to both opioid addiction and to gun violence in this, in this community. And I think a part of that is because while the economy of Florida has flourished overall, it's done out of the coast and our rural communities have been left behind. They've been forgotten about. And, and you know, this, this is a community that I don't want to be forgotten about. I want to be able to move back here. My grandmother has dementia. I have two nieces and nephew that just gave me another niece and nephew. So I mean, I'm connected to this community and I want to see it flourish and I want to see it grow. But the issue is that, you know, Avon Park is not Silicon Valley. It is not a port or coastal city. The value that is in Avon Park comes from the minds of these people and the work and the efforts of the people. And in order to get the return on investment or the return of the value that is really there, we have to create an infrastructure in order for us to succeed. And if not, we'll continue down this road of discharing rural America. And that, that's not the future of a successful country, a successful state, a successful community. And so long story short is I would love to be able to live and survive and work in the community in which I was born and raised. I, you know, I learned to drive here. I kissed my first girl at Avon Park. This is, this is my community.
You don't need to brag.
Basically, what I'm saying is that I would love the opportunity to come and to live and work here. And in order for that to happen, we can't do the patchwork of things that we don't. It's, it's time for transformational change in order for us to be a part of the twenty-first century. We're, we're still operating as if this is nineteen fifty. It's not. This is two thousand twenty-one and it's only going to get older compared to four billion. And it is time for us to revolutionize this city. We cannot sit back idly by, you know, thinking just about fuel cells. You know, I, I can't feed my, my future children on fuel cells. That's not my business. But if there's a booming thriving economy right here on Highway twenty-seven, within a hundred miles of a bunch of different colleges and universities, within a hundred and fifty miles of the beaches and the waterways on the rail line, we can create something right here in this community. But it's going to take the leadership of you all to do that. And I, I yield my time and appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you, Charlie Brown. I see we got one more from North Florida, Ted Everett, must be done with his CRA meeting. You know, one of the reasons why we, we really try to look for leadership throughout the state because this is not a local problem, this is a state problem. And we feel that proprietary business models or innovative thinking can really help a lot of different communities. But Ted Everett, chairman of Opportunity Florida, can you, you online? I just, you know, share about what you want to contribute to Avon Park, your background and how you can do it.
Yes, thank you, Jonathan. Good evening, councilmen. I'm sorry I'm late. I had a CRA meeting. I am currently the executive director of the Washington County Chamber of Commerce, also the executive director of the Economic Development Council.
as well as the executive director of the Chipley Redevelopment Agency. And, uh, we just had a CRA meeting, uh, and, um, took a little bit longer than I hoped it would. But, uh, needless to say, you know, this is an opportunity as I see it from the lens of economic development. And, um, this is a opportunity once in a lifetime, I think, for Avon Park. Very, very few, uh, cities have been offered something like this. It is new. I give you that. But the opportunities and the, and the level for potential is great for both Avon Park and in our company. There is, uh, you know, and we're all, we're all smart people. Um, if, if the airport has not been doing uh, as well as it should, I truly believe that this model that we're showing you can take you to the next level like that gentleman just was speaking at. This is 2021. I can tell you that economic developers across the nation are looking for new ways to attract businesses and opportunities. And, um, this thing has really just come together for you guys at the right time, I believe. Uh, everybody on this board that represents, uh, our company has a lot of different strengths and different backgrounds that they bring to this table. I would suggest that, uh, Avon Park take a really good, positive look at this. Because I think that, uh, if, if we're allowed to do this, in as little as five years, you'll be thinking, uh, this public-private partnership that we can work together to enhance both Avon Park and the economic development opportunities, create some jobs. Everybody needs jobs. This is, everything that I see in my business is going towards the future. Money is being put in to the future. This represents the future. So, uh, I'm on board with it. I hope you guys are on board with it and, uh, I would be glad to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Everett? Seeing none, JT.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ted, for speaking. Uh, uh, our last, uh, leadership, uh, I want to speak before you, before, and actually I want to, uh, recognize again that we have the USDA director for fire refineries, biochemical production, bio-based product manufacturer, Chris Cassidy. Thank you, sir, for taking the time out. He's been a great advocate of our organization to try to help people make the virtualized crops. Uh, and couldn't do it without USDA partnership on that. So, uh, with that being said, Juan Lopez, Lopez? Go ahead, Juan.
Thank you. Still muted there. Juan Lopez. Can't hear you, Juan. There we go. There you go.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Oh, you're muted again.
Very good.
Am I back?
Yes, sir. You're back.
Okay. All right. Um, well, Mayor, uh, members of the days, uh, thank you for taking the time to meet with us. Um, so, you know, I, I'll, I'll keep it short and I know I'm at the tail end. Um, and I, you know, I, I want to, I want to be, be able to close this out a little bit. Um, so, um, you guys got my resume, um, and you saw it last time. And, um, I worked for the U, United States House of Representatives and the US Senate for almost 15 years. Um, uh, right, right here in Florida. I didn't work on the Hill. I worked right here in Florida. Part of our responsibilities, uh, in working, uh, in the House and Senate is basically to get money, bring money into the district, uh, bring resources into the district, bring resources into the state. Um, so for very, for many, many years, uh, we have thought of and came up with many ways, many creative ways to be able to, uh, bring, you know, other vein taps into the area for economic development, for infrastructure, et cetera. And in, in this particular case, it won't be just FAA or, or the Department of Transportation. Because this is, because this company and because of what we intend to do with new technologies here, this opens us up to a wide variety of, um, uh, of different agencies that we will be dealing with. Um, I currently live and work in the Washington DC area. Um, I am a Floridian. I went to elementary school in, in Florida, um, you know, and I'm always looking for, um, a reason to help out the home team. Uh, my current company that I work at, uh, we have, uh, we are a government services company and we have contracts, uh, with, with different branches of the federal government, with states all over the nation. Um, and, um, and, and just an example of, of, of the economic development, I, I, uh, our company, uh, landed and have, uh, some future interests in Florida and do, and doing business. And we came up with, then with, uh, we, we had a need recently, uh, to hire several people. And it didn't matter where in Florida. We just needed to hire, uh, several people and it just dawned on me like a light. Um, why not Highlands County? Uh, I reached out to economic development director. They, uh, pointed me towards Career Source Heartland and I developed a relationship with them. Said our company has a need. There's several other companies that, that have a need to be able to hire folks right, right here in Florida. So in, in the spirit of partnership with your community, um, we are already indirectly, um, you know, helping out, uh, with, uh, with, uh, with these partnerships. Um, so, and, 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 uh, I, I, I really love the organization. I love, uh, I've loved working with the folks down, down there. Um, and it's actually only the, the, only the beginning. I, I truly, truly think that, um, uh, that Avon Park and Highlands County is a gem. Um, and I really, really, really think that this place has a fantastic, fantastic, uh, you know, potential, uh, for, for growth. Um, part of my job as well, uh, up here in Washington, in Washington DC is to be able to bring those eyes from up here, those businesses, um, from up, from up here, Caffey, the Commercial Aviation, um, Commercial Aviation Alternative Fuels Institute, uh, the AIA, the, the Aviation Institute of America, uh, where, where their brains trust is, is Boeing, uh, Lockheed, uh, you know, e- even SpaceX. Um, you know, I, my job is to get those eyes and focus them down, uh, in Avon Park. I think that we have, uh, 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 an enormous, uh, opportunity. We, there is an opportunity for, for the, on the agro, uh, side, uh, to really, really make an impact. Um, I'm already, I've been in contact for several, several months with AM Cham China, the American Chamber, uh, of Commerce in China. Um, and under, um, under President Trump, um, at the time, he, he came out, he rolled out with the, the phase one of the China trade deal within, which includes um, billions and billions of dollars that China must purchase from the United States on all things agro. Um, and they're not meeting those requirements. The, the gap there is there. The potential there, the potential is there. It's got to come from somewhere. It is going to come from, you know, California. It is going to come from Oregon. It isn't, it, it is going to come from other places. Why can't Florida do the same exact thing? And I think that, uh, with, uh, the resources that we'll be pulling together, um, and, uh, and, and really push uh, these, these organizations up in Washington, I, I got to tell you, um, this is, uh, this is going to be a lot bigger um, than what most people realize. I'm very excited. I thank you guys for giving us the time to speak tonight and I look forward, uh, to speaking with all of you, uh, more often. Thank you so much.
Well, good. Thank you.
Hey, Juan. He's being modest. It's not our company, so I don't, whatever's, I will reach here, but, uh, required 42,000 jobs, uh, in this region since we started. You're being modest, I can work. So even indirectly, just with us working here, trying to get to know the community members, pressing down the dock, we, we brought our inferior uh, to, to try to bring it to you. So, um, with that being said, that's all. Our speakers, uh, they're available to make it tonight. So, although we're in that part of the meeting, unfortunately, we have our team that is, uh, we've learned a lot about you. Uh, we certainly appreciate the time, uh, speakers who've been here tonight. We do have, uh, one sign up, Mr. Richard McKevy. He'd like to speak at this time or he'd like to wait. Yeah, come before you.
Yes. He's been the same, right over there, 2005, six, dressed in counseling. Then, uh, the person on behalf of, of the airport, uh, actually, I'm not an angel. He said, um, I build, anybody to build, uh, I've been out and built out over the years. That'd be something possible to do. Told by somebody that it was possible. Then, later, later in time, he become a host. Still has jobs, still at the airport. And the thing about it is, essentially like that airport, I said then and I said now, it's never been, you know, you, you, it's a scratch that surface. Um, I, I, I always loved being around the mission. I've been a pilot through many years. Um, I respect the counsel of Avon Park, of life, the city of Avon Park. The fact of property of that park. Um, even I've been a father, but my father, you know, for many years. And I guess a important question I'd like to ask, uh, I don't want to talk to Nancy, but I'd like to ask one question. Do you see that airport as a liability or an asset? Just.
An asset.
Always an asset. You know, it's, it's, it's hard for a lot of people. It's not familiar with that. Especially myself. My dad used that road and I call it a liability because I had a working or selling, so it's not a good school. And, uh, I didn't like that very well, but over time, the law flows. You know, it's another thing that you need to do. And the same road that I sold, I looked at it and I had a vision of gray. That's what I've done for all of my life. And I see that road today. I sold it to the government. And I said, well, I'd like to see that road, but, 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 like Jeff was saying, it's kind of what it is. And I had some speech I wanted to talk about and I want to take what you've come up to a lot of people. But, you know, I went in there, sold the property, they cleared it off. And I was like, that's a bad thing. Since that time, the one home has been the one that's saving profit. I've got opportunity to work in this company, both the old South Florida, the old Highland County, clearing profit out. And had opportunity of, of a lot of times to work, as far as funding, as well as a lot of other people from other states that's informed up here, at these facilities, not here in Highland County. And I'm always sure of Crossroads, Landmark Park, Crossroads, South End Pole. Now, parks, northern of Highland, not South Fred. We're a city like Seabird, a lot of things in my head. Trying to get into the cross street, if in Highland County, Avon Park, is under that white hood, that airport. I said, if you're out of the five, you can come into my highway, but you can come in a lot of different spaces in that airport. You win a lot of money and that, and that's, that's a good asset. And then the city of Avon Park, they need to take advantage of it, whether it be for the other type businesses, a lot of, a lot of knowledge that I'm behind it. This is the first time I've got opportunity to actually ever listen to it. And, uh, we know what we set there for, it's a bunch of citizens people in, in rural. And, uh, I think, you know, the way you can look at it, and I, I always said, hope I want to do this soon and I don't know what it'll be. But, you know, I'm full supporter of it, for things, uh, to do better for this community. I love to see stuff like that. That's all I've got to say. I had the opportunity to work at it for ten years. The city was really good to work with and, uh, uh, there's some things that happened, but it was always a good feeling to be a part of this community. And I want to say, uh, and I'm still feeling it here today and I still, but I appreciate it. I'm a very person. I love the actual. What do y'all mean as I do that?
Appreciate. We have any questions for, for, for again? Thanks for being here. I know. Parents, can you ask a question?
Yes.
So based on the way y'all guys have the agenda set up, uh, I wanted to go over some of these nine items. We want to get a motion on it, a vote, uh, to proceed, uh, today. But I don't know if you want to do that now, uh, or do that, uh, recover that now?
Well.
Because you have other, uh, did items, or y'all, or y'all want us to come back in twenty minutes?
I think in order to give, in order to give them justice, you need to select special counsel. And, um, you know, fairly soon, in order to get this thing done, if you're going to do it at all. We have, uh, as I mentioned, we form the special counsel and define them on the aspects of the deal as well as the contract. I mean, I, I, uh, I can look at a contract and make changes. I made recommendations of them. First two drafts I made, but as far as the deals, it's something, whether you want to do it or not, that's totally different. You need to consider that. And I think, uh, we have two firms. One was, um, uh, very strong aviation. They have not done two free. Another one has done two free. They have not done four point, they have two frees when they know what's to be. Uh, there is a third one that provides information on it. It's, uh, it's actually, uh, incidentally, uh, I know the materials they put in this person, um, pamphlet that he put out regarding two frees for airports, uh, for, um, for returns, basically. There's an article on that and it's pretty good. I did, uh, it's been with Peter Hirsch. And, uh, so, I mean, I think you should consider those, uh, those firms and, uh, uh, make a selection and find out as part of that, you know, in terms of, uh, the, the three firms come in and say, this is how we, we propose, we'd be necessary, we want to come up with the unbinding, like, what is it with, uh, these people? And, um, so we know when you agree enough that actually make the climate, it's necessary or to do, uh, and it's a contract. So, uh, that's, that's what I propose and it makes a special need. You know, uh, we can get, get that, uh, on what you just, just basically, the trend waters in place.
I have a question. Yeah, there, there, and our last, uh, candidate, we, that was a question asked about phones to be provided by the, um, um, Sam company. Has that been addressed yet to here?
I, 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 it's one of the items that they have on their list, which I think is appropriate. Uh, now, um, the, the firm does two frees on Miami and said basically that, you know, it's made to offer basically pays on the terms to be special counsel. And then they're the special counsel. I, I got Mr. Hirsch's, uh, in from that part of which I found in the research and checked with, um, from the court, uh, and he was, um, decided by them. But I think the other two stuff is, uh, maybe very good as well. Uh, it's not completely said, uh, it's something you can consider though and you can order you forward. But that, that amount, you know, it's got, well, it's something you have to basically pin down for is how they want to pay. It's, uh, I burnt out Miami, so it would be not possible that we, that we present to you, um, enough information, you have a decision that you want, where you want to proceed forward or not. Um, for that kind, you got a lot of your office, it's $8,000, something like that. Seven or eight thousand. Uh, you're saying it's been more than, more than 5,000. I don't know if that's true. Uh, but I, I think it's, uh, they need to sort of structure, come forward and say, here's, we've been across North Florida to get you a point. We can make a decision whether to proceed forward or not. Enough information for you to say, okay, we intend to reform as long as we can agree upon these terms. We don't prefer. Uh, the third years they want, you know, the, you know, what portion of this is going to be partnering as opposed to the, uh, prioritization, which is initially the one that's prioritization, so likely. But, um, uh, we partner with, you know, how much we're going to get, you know, that sort of thing is being dealt with. And the case is, what's important, you're working to a P3, but they, um, they all confronted, so it hurt, didn't do that much for them. But they liked what he did, you know, in that aspect, that they just decided was going to go on. It's not big, the P3 is bad, it's just words, like, I think the attorney, what's more, the aviation board is, uh, he said, he thought it was not to that, so.
So basically, they need for you. So our last meeting, uh, essentially, the council consensus that we needed some form of legal representation. So our last meeting, uh, essentially, the council consensus that we needed some form of legal representation to help us negotiate the deal, and that all sides are represented fairly. Uh, so the issue came to, how do we select one of those law firms? How much money are you guys going to contribute to that to help us make that city? Yeah, so, so basically, the question that we posed to you is, what is your offer of level of support in that? And are you willing to go through that?
So a couple things on that, we, I did listen to the, uh, meeting minutes, and, uh, you know, I was quite appalled with one of your three recommendations, the package, of proprietary technologies and business models, and then the thing that we were going to actually pay for it, to market to. Uh, but what we got going on, can be, people pay it anyways, but going to, you know, what our technologies are, what our revenue incomes are, what our subordinates are, to pay them in order to protect it, up for the better. Uh, you know, if we aren't going to contribute any dollars, uh, before we go on any agreement, uh, we want to be able to mutually be able to pick the three of them. Even though they have the new share right to the city, um, we provided three others, very talented, three young aviation friends, uh, to work out a lot with space goes, north of the room and walk people. Uh, and so, it's not that we don't want to contribute, but we want to meet in street court before we go to Vegas. And so what we try to do is block out all the noise, uh, which we didn't think was a lot of noise, but simplify the terms you need more. Uh, item one that we have is a term for leasehold interest for thirty years. Now, my question to the city is, you have to know that you can't lease, you have thirty-eight leases out there. I believe everybody is confident enough to know that City of Lakeview Park does have the authority to lease. And so if you do have the authority to lease, I want y'all to be amenable to a thirty-year leasehold. Because we, it's going to be challenging for us for a couple of different reasons. Even if we're getting awarded for a home, lenders are going to want a thirty-year loan. If we do public bonding, uh, which we've already spoke about, you know, the government, uh, the town level members, uh, for the, uh, for the, finance development corporation, on doing, on each capital improvement project, the kind of bonding capacity, they're going to require forty years for a lot of this. And that's one of the reasons why we even started it this year, because we limited ourselves tremendously on what we can do, uh, with anything less. And then, on that thirty years also, if every bit of the structural improvements remain in title of the city, I mean, even if we didn't even bring in any subordinates, and we just built from that plan, what could already have, already that's forty million dollars, and would, you know, be valued, that is, maybe like back to the city. But we have no ownership coming on, you know, and we're not doing this here as a real thing. No, so, here or there, either. But, you know, the city is already asking, yeah, I mean, that's more than a million dollars value here, if it dropped that. But we're more on that side. So what I would, what we would like to see is go through a group app. Go on how you want to vote. Motion, yes, we agree, as long as legal doesn't kick us back, which we have done extensive knowledge of, or research on this, and even provide congressional, uh, research service requests to identify exactly what even the F A would have to look at in determining the legality of this. Everything that we are proposing is outside of the A P P program. Uh, so we're confident that they won't, whatever special counsel is hired, we're not going to kick that.
Wait, can you repeat that outside of the gates? What, what did you mean by that? You're saying outside of the gate, you're not talking about inside the gate airport lease? You're talking outside the gate, like, like there are a bunch of ports getting ready outside the gate?
Okay, so.
Right, you're just using a figure of speech.
No, no, uh, under, under, uh, one of the charts that we, uh, provided with congressional research service requests, that, uh, what is exactly qualified under the A P P program? And outside of the A P P program? Okay, we are absolutely outside and city of Lakeview Park, that city does have the authority to make whatever arrangements we want. Uh, and you know, and I'm really not trying to get off, I don't want to get off topic. So a lot of the funds that we are going for, we can't do it without public, public can't do it without, uh, private partnerships. Uh, the USDA wants to, is looking for innovation centers. They're not going to award that money without a public private partnership. So they're going to do it alone, we couldn't do it alone, right? They, the, these governing authorities want to see public entity do work with private. So I would like to go one by one on this, answer any question part of this, and see if we can get a motion and a vote. When we get down to the special counsel, if, you know, based on how you guys vote, and how much y'all want to meet us in street court, then we'll know, we better suit it, to know how much we can contribute.
Yeah. Well, I, I think, I think you're, I think you're, you're actually, uh, you're ahead of it, because, um, part of the deal is, there's nuances associated with, you're saying thirty-year lease, okay, thirty-year lease, is that even a lease? Fifty thousand dollars a month? Uh, if you're going to go for thirty years like that?
Oh, so you're, you're, you're talking about performance methods?
I don't know about performance based, yes, of course. But that's a nuance associated with a long-term lease. And I, you know, I don't think anybody's been a problem with a long-term year lease, like thirty-year lease, for so long, as those nuances were dealing with. And I, and I, I'm not, uh, I'm not here to suggest, with, with, knowing it, because like I said, that's not my specialty. But there are people who have a specialty, and they'll say, now, as far as what, now, what percentage of the city gets back from what you're doing, you're going to be out of operations and so on? I, as you said, twenty percent. I have no idea whether that's going to be more, whether that's, that's too high or too low. I have no idea what, what it is. Uh, but I think that somebody who does do this, wouldn't have that idea.
So let me back up for a little bit. We never expected from the start of this, that this would be a one vote decision. When we met with all y'all individually, we were told by Eric Anderson and a few of y'all, there's no way we can get through this on this one. I'm going to use our simple house analogy. If I want to purchase a home, can you tell me what things are? I have to put that in the contract first, and then it goes through closing, then it goes through legal, and then it goes through financing. Now, someone who turned to that may change, because now we go into inspection, we find that we have mold in the ceiling. So I want to amend our ass price a different amount. But at least we know that we have another, we have a contract, and we know what meant to be a closing date should be. Because it's also not fair for us on this end, to, A, pay out a package for somebody to package our deal to try and give it to a competitor, one. And then B, we have other active municipalities in negotiation. We have constant ongoing negotiations, appropriations up at state level, on behalf of this city. You know, we, we have to attend, and we need to be there. And so what we want to know is, before we move to that, can we be in street court? Part one of the contract is, will approve or disapprove. The F B O runs. As long as there's no legality issues, we'll allow you to be the F B O. C, design, build, finance, operate, uh, maintain agreements. Do we feel confident that this team can execute this appropriately? And we will agree to that, if in fact, special counsel does not see a problem with that. And so as we go, now, now we know where we stand. And even if it is an arbitrary number of what the profit share, do you vote that notion you worked out, that's all we think. What we want to know is, if you want us to pay, get us to, to Las Vegas, we have to get to street court. And that's where our contract is, and every week we convene and sit and pay. But what we don't want to also do is go back in here every two weeks. Trying to think, we have a new, uh, presentation for you, because it has not been positive from day one. Because we knew that we still had to remain public, not know where the consensus that we ever tried to privatize it, therefore, that we can prove. Now, with that being said, we do want to be able to negotiate the leases that are moving in there. We want to negotiate the financing portion of it, because we have to, because each capital improvement project will require a different capital step. And if we are trying to do point different capital improvement projects at one time, we're going to be in here every day. Trying to share with you guys on a part-time basis what we have an entire team working on to complete. And then, so that is one of the, the, you know, bonuses of the path of pride that we suffer. That we don't have a dear opportunity to take a lot of time in public, and we have to, you know, have to do it. We can say, okay, this is our mission objective. Those are city representatives, this capital improvement project, one that we want to do in the next six months. This is where we expect to see ourselves in the next year. But at the back of the week, we don't actually, why we have to be able to know, comfortably tell our subordinates, or our lenders, that yes, we have a, this is our responsibility for the next year. Uh, and because if it's not, we can say, well, we get a whole new council next year. Nobody gets real like, well, why, why were we renewing this lease after we've got hopefully seven, eight figures, uh, of dollar amount, and thousands of human capital hours invested into it? And so just for us to, for those to hit the road, you know? So all we're asking is, and I want to make that clear, we understand this probably two-part vote. One part of vote, you agree to some of these terms. Second part of vote is after the special counsel has been given it. Then you come back, all y'all have the, the ability to read it on your own accord, special counsel can advise, keep it away on that. And then we come back, because, you know, right, your special counsel mindset, okay, I found out, you know, two example here, with the congressional research service request, a fan profit share of the city actually is not going to fly, it's going to have to go back into their court. We're not perfect on this side, right? So, okay, all right, interesting, why didn't we not test it sooner? And so for the contracting, the revenues have to be invested back. Or a special fund here. Now, special counsel mindset, well, you know, house bill three, seven, one, nine, zero, because we haven't got the update, uh, from public community office out of Washington. But there may be something we need to move on that. Or if we profit share to a special fund, maybe the homeless go there. Right, maybe that's where you want to spend it. The, the special fund, I don't feel you decide it. What we want to see from, from the city is, he wants it. And if he wants it here, can we go through these nine items? One by one, discuss what that means. And as long as special counsel, if you say it's a problem, because we can't give it, we can't do that. If we paid with your counsel, and then he says this is the rule.
Now, can I answer a question? Uh, now, I think, uh, a new opportunity asking, if we go through these nine items, if something happens to you, and agree to them, and then the special counsel or anybody else comes about and say, this is not in the best interest of the city, or whatever it is. And to be honest with you, I can't remember what, uh, whether it was fifteen or twelve, I think it was.
That's right.
But if, if, if something like that comes about, and we already agreed, okay, this is what we're going to do, we're going to offer a fam this, uh, 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 agreement, as, as if, then what would happen?
My, your, your suggestion is, uh, we should be on a best separate basis, and we should also know if you guys are working on the best, if something does come off, that we will not be rude about it, and say, well, we voted on it, so we're not going to go.
That's right.
All you can hope that we have indemnification in our agreements. Because at the end of the day, oh, want to help me out, Winston Churchill. Uh, we can only do our best, and the best is all we can do. I think I said that, oh, I didn't want your Winston Churchill, but we're not perfect on this, and even if that, you know, we don't expect something to be either. And so what we also need to know is, he wants it.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, I think what we're trying to tell you is that the best that we can do is basically offer you a consensus that we would potentially agree to this time.
Right.
Exactly.
They're not going to vote, they're not going to vote on the terms, because I want you all to feel like there's anything binding whatsoever. But if somebody has a serious problem with some of these terms here, they need to let them know, uh, and what, what their problem is with the terms. Uh, and so you can get counsel, you know, um, as I said, it's way too nuanced to try and make that kind of decision.
So, I mean, I have no problem going through these one by one, as long as you can understand that, you know, we're not contractually agreeing to these terms. This is just the council in a general way, saying, yes, this is probably what we would look into, this is what we would like to see.
Depending on, depending on terms of a contract that we offer you and so.
Right.
I mean, it's, because the contract that you've signed so far is, is, is not what you're saying, I mean, it's me, it'll be more like privatization. You say it's not, but, but I got, but I like that saying, like, this agreement, there's no partnership associated with that original agreement. I mean, you want to use a simple analogy, like you did. So I have a silver mine, and, but I'm too infirm, too sick to work it myself, so I hire somebody to go work silver mine. You go in and say, okay, well, we'll work the silver, silver mine, but you got to give it to us. And then we'll work it, and then we'll, we'll, we'll pull out all the silver and tell them that we figured it out. And then we'll sell it back to you when we're done, so.
And, uh, if we were going to keep the real thing, that was the early conversation.
But there's, there's no doubt, there's no doubt, that if you have to build something, you need to have a right associated with the value that you built there. But when you were talking about the original agreement, and I, I don't know, I can say it's different. Uh, the original agreement was said, basically, we give you the airport for a dollar. You keep the air, you keep the airport, you work it, and you do all the things you want to do with it. And you may sell it back to us if we are willing to agree on the price. To us, whatever's in there is now, we've lost, because it's what the agreement says.
Uh, go ahead.
Mayor, okay?
Yeah.
Can I?
Please.
Your city attorney? So this is city attorney number one, we never, in all this time that we've been doing the conversation, that we've talked about any type of partnership. Okay, and what we say from day one is, it was a partnership that we're doing. This is why you pass revenue to the road. This is why job basis is economic development. This council, the last time we were here, and we had, we're sending a proposal, this council gave us some of their suggestions. We came back with, now what you have in front of you. Now, this council is asking us, and see, this is confusing to this mayor, because in my city of Kessiny, the only time I go to outside counsel is whenever I'm going to do an eminent domain. Okay, I have a, a counsel and attorney that handles everything else. So this is, you know, me, so, so, Beth, just give me a few minutes, I know you're, you're down to speak. So all we're asking, is you're asking us to flip the bill, right? We're us, you're asking us to pay the bill for your legal fee on something that we don't know if this council still has hyper on. So all we're asking you, and this council, is, it can be done with a simple motion. It's a simple motion. If this council agrees to the terms, contingent on legal counsel advice. That way it gives us insurance that we know that at least on your end, you're fine. Now we're waiting for your legal counsel, because the same as he said on the real estate transaction. Buy the contract on my property, do inspection. Inspection comes back and you're not happy with it, now you're going to renegotiate. And this is the same thing.
What would you want as a contract, seeing here tonight, to go on?
No, no, sir, sir, we would never ask you for a contract.
Contingent on that, that one thing alone.
No, sir.
That means that you want something binding, contingent on something not binding.
No, no, sir.
The, the council.
Sir, I, I, I believe, uh, I think I'm speaking English. Hopefully you understand.
Well.
I'm asking the council, with all due respect, Mr. Attorney, with all due respect, what we're asking this council is to give us some kind of insurance that we're not here having to keep coming back with other proposals and other proposals. We want to know what direction this council is heading, so we know where we stand, what we're going to do to move forward. And like I said, Mayor, it could be a simple motion with a contingency on council approval. That gives us peace of mind that we know we're headed in the right direction. We're actually sitting at the table, we're negotiating possibly. And please, I will beg all of you to take away from your mind this idea of privatization. There's no way in our conversation, where we ever said that we wanted to privatize this airport. So, so it continues to come up, and it continues to confuse, even when I'm all the way to the F A. See, this mayor still has an ear on different area in the state. And so I don't know why this conversation is still continuing. And so we're asking, you know, we came in good faith to do business in, in partnership with the city. The last meeting, with all the respect to this council, we were ambushed. Our reputation was questioned, our motive were questioned. When you guys had our lesson eight with you, okay, you guys had our background with you. I listened to you prior meeting, and I heard that attorney that you're proposing maybe hiring, how he said that was going to take our ideas to shuffle around with that. There is, talk about legal, and I'm not an attorney, but I know quite a few, and talk about a legal issue there, okay? But we're not even against that. We just want to feel that this council is in the same mindset of us before we even agree to pay one dime for your legal fee. We want to know where we stand. And, and honestly, if this council denied, tells us, no, we're not doing this, we're going to continue rolling, picking the can down the field, please let us know, uh, we're busy people, we have many other airports that we can do. We have many other airports that we can do business with, and we will leave as friends the same way that we came in. So, thank you so much.
And then, my, 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 my. Go ahead. First of all, I want to thank you and the team for being here tonight, I appreciate the time and effort. I want you to know that, that I think the council does appreciate the time and effort, put into it. And we've made some changes to our, to our liking. But I've always said from the day one, my biggest issue would be risk reward, we know that. Even with your, uh, first, uh, the scene you put on the, uh, the video up there, one of the first sentences was the fact that this would be a, um, a lease performance. So, my concern is that to make sure that we have not only level of anticipation, a level of protection. And so, it all comes to me back, I, that I think City of Avon Park would like to have you been brought into here. And I don't see any problems with your business. But my biggest problem is the legalization of having a lawyer tell us that a contract, this is what we need to do to change, this is what we need to make sense. And once we get the lawyer's opinion, and we can work that out, then I think we could need to make an agreement. It's pretty difficult to make an agreement when you have issues here, which I think some of them we can basically agree to, and some of them we may not be knowledgeable if they ever say yes or no yet. But I definitely think that I for one would like to see this move forward. And, and I would, I expressed that opinion on Thursday night. But I also wanted to know that main thing though, is legal people have to be empowered to tell us that the city of, City of Avon Park is protected, that we have risk reward, that there's performance levels that if you don't meet, whether it's five years, ten, whatever, that the option for us to get out of that contract is available. And this is something that attorneys have to do, special attorneys that are involved with airports, public private partnership. So, I would be wanting to move forward, but big but to make sure that we get our lawyer, that will be able to work with us, tell us what's the easiest way to move forward with our perspective in the Avon Park, and this statute is fair to foot. It was, we, but.
So go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, let me just, I have to say something, I too would like to work with you all, and I think this is a real point. I know the city of Avon Park is while it's great, could never kind of offer your fund, you know, planning on doing that this city get out, right, add on airfield. So I do welcome you. However, just, uh, the, this president of Avon Park is our neighbor. Okay. Uh, when I first read the very first proposal, I too thought it was quite an interesting viewpoint. And that was just my mind, my thinking, a little bit that I know. But now as I research through the, the remaining of your proposal here, I personally, and as a representative of the city of Avon Park, would go for, uh, voting to negotiate the nine items that you have here. However, I still would like to see if a legal council tells us item number AC does not profit, I'm going to use that as an example, does not, does not, uh, uh, is not in the best benefit of the citizens of Avon Park. I want us to be able to have a way to say, hey, look, we don't want to do that, this government wants to do it. And it's because, and I say all this, because see, I was over there on the council when we, the council, made a negotiation with another very large firm. We didn't know what we were doing, and I'm the first one to say that. We relied on our, the, uh, council that we had at the time. Years passed, and it filtered out that that deal that we made with certain organizations was not the best thing for the city of Avon Park. I don't want to make that mistake with you. So that's why I'm saying I need to now feel secure that there is a way to protect our citizens of Avon Park. And Danielle, if you understand what you're saying.
Absolutely, we're not here to hurt anybody, even in the current agreement that we gave you, doing already self-performing present, if there is a default, we have thirty days to hear that default. If we go bankrupt, this is what happens there. If it goes to arbitration, but at the same time too, we have been guessing at what the city wants to do. And it's very hard to dance with a dance partner who doesn't want to dance it. And so, me neither, we're making this up, you know? But, you know, so my request is, can we go one by one? On the, the resolutions are your city dinner fund, they are your sanitation. They have nothing to do with us, but currently, the airport revenues are paying, and you're saying that it's all that debt. So if you, we'll jump there, if you want us to pay for that debt, okay, fine, that is what the city recommends do. But then it also, we need to be able to budget that, finance that, right? Are we going to keep the same terms? Are we not going to keep the same terms? So the vote is on resolution fifteen oh nine today, that we will, uh, look into having our general fund pay that bill off. Or, or, you know, at the very least, is that airport debt or is that city debt? That's all we're trying to clarify. Because one of them, you know, is a brown bill that was by, I think the former, uh, payee.
So, so, so in saying that,
Yeah.
just, just you for that as another example.
Yeah.
Yep, it is discovered that that is a city debt or airport debt or have you, that we can adjust that. That's, I think that's what we're saying, that we want to be able to have the opportunity.
Danielle, do you know, we have copies of those resolutions, for those for the cleanup from the, um, oil spills that were out there?
Yes, one of them.
So that's like three hundred thousand dollars that we're borrowing from the city's fund, paid off the cleanup, right?
Yes, one of them is for the contamination cleanup, and the other one is for operating expenses.
And tonight, we're supposed to be discussing the cleanup, the balance of the cleanup with whatever.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that loan still open?
Right, yeah.
Is that the same, the same?
Yeah.
One of them is.
Yes, yes, one, one of them is.
On the agenda, you know, I have, I have to decide. General case, so my question, Danielle.
Danielle.
I'm sorry, okay. I'm sure.
Well, one was for the contamination cleanup, that was out of general fund. And then there was another, um, loan that was taken out of the sanitation fund for, um, general operating costs.
Of the airport.
Of the airport.
And so, have both of those, I mean, are we right now paying on the principal, or is there still money left in those loans?
There's still money left.
So, again, we have loans out there that we haven't spent money on, we're paying you.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
And that's one of the problems that we have, that, that are why the ripple building is no longer the way it is. So, you know, how much money is remaining in that loan?
Which one?
Oh, either one.
Um, if you go to.
The one that.
Well, anyway, we can get to that when we get to that, and I just have that question. Those loans were not for operational needs, they were for the cleanup of.
One of them.
One of the ones, one of the bigger ones, right?
Uh, fifteen oh nine. Uh, I have them right here, and we understand them. And so, but we also know that however y'all want to move forward on each one of these, or if we pay the sanitation debt that is not supposed to be supported by airport revenues, um, but y'all went, you know, I think this council took very day Ramsey on everything to make sure the debt cashes off right away, in any case, um, we have to reflect that on our balance sheet, if you want us to pay that seven hundred thousand dollars, or whatever the remaining balance is. But that's, again, you get under, you get under a contract agreement, and then you work through the closing settlement procedures to figure out
Uh huh.
at closing, our responsibility to pay City of Avon Park's assets. At closing, City of Avon Park's responsibility is to pay us.
So, so in saying that, once we get our special counsel, we, once we decide to go ahead, move forward, is once we get our special counsel, this is what our special counsel will be negotiating. Uh, okay, advise us off on the record. So, okay, so after we, this, what, I don't see any problem with the twins of you. In the event that something happened, well, we can say, oh, no, we don't want to do that call. We don't want to do this call, or we agree to that.
And just to clarify, what you're asking for us to do tonight is to look at aid him see and agree to those things tonight, right?
You vote to your heart.
Yes, sir.
Right?
And then, and then, if that's for us to move forward, and if it comes out later on, that, you know, to agree some of the specific things that we have here, then what, you walk away?
No.
It's up to you.
So, so we come back to the big, the gross thing. By, by, you guys decide we're going forward. A contingency on final decision with the council that we buy free. And so that gives us, by us seeing where you guys are heading, we know that we're in the right place of mind, both of us together. Contracts can be negotiated at any time.
So, but my question is, it could go back and forth, right? So it wouldn't require all of you to be here every single time, right? I, I personally did not know that all of you were going to be here tonight, so, you know, please don't put that on us, that we're wasting your time, and that you'll have to come back and forth, that we would never.
Put on a good show.
So, we want to, when I said what I said, was I wanted to make sure that we can continue to move forward in, in the right place for why.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get at, I mean, but I'm trying to read, I'm trying to read.
People said, well, wow, you've been, you've been voted on, you're ready to walk away.
Oh, no, we're, we're not willing to pay for a council if we do not know that you guys may or may not allow that in a stupid way. I mean, it's like.
Well, it's all right, I'm just there. So what you're saying is basically, if we're going to figure out what we're moving forward or not, we think the council ourselves at that point, so that's what you're saying.
No, sir, no, no, I'm not saying that.
Once they're both done, all right, there, answer this question. If we vote to approve whatever certain standards we approve based on special counsel recommendations, are we committing ourselves to a contract development?
From a legal standpoint, technically no, because we saw a community that's not bound by any contract, it's not right. But I think it's, it's better, bad thing, it appears to be a bad thing. And, and a negotiation gets you basically say, right, or no agreements for a contract subject to, uh, special counsel saying, you know, it's all okay. That's just not making sense to me, because then we can just call special counsel, you are special counsel, they're wherever it may be, and say, look, we don't like any of this kind of, the way that you're proposing because so, uh, you know, the recommendation is we don't move forward. But then at the same time, I said, well, you, you don't even have special counsel, but we also agree to it. And that's just, that's just law, that's basically that law. You never said, you said, you said, I want to have law to have a great counsel, that you can agree to a law, and you made recommendations.
You have to initially, you have to be agree.
You have to initially agree on a counsel. Well, that's not a way to start counseling, don't start counseling, he's like, I feel this as well.
They start, oh, you get to pick our counsel, well, we don't believe we never, we never have counsel.
I can't get all together, it's a bit.
It's a big, that's a big deal.
We also, we also ask for these nine minimum, they are not the contract. At the end of the night, it says to pick a lawyer. So if, if you don't have a lawyer, there's no contract. So, these are the minimums you need to gauge, to get a temperature read of each one of you. Yes, no, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no. So we can take that this week to a board meeting, and at the end of the week, and say, we have these items, we have three of nine, is this enough to continue? Because we've spent five months in these villages. And originally, we were under a statute that protected our NTA of our tenants, okay? And looking, and, and we sat with everyone, and we knew that we were under, we, we, in good faith, both of us knew that we were under that statute protecting us. And then we had got to Gerald Burns, excuse me, the lawyer Gerald Burns, he threw it out, and so now we, we were exposed. So I hope to God that other airports are listening tonight, because we will be contacted by other airports this week. And I'm just asking you to make a good decision to move forward. We need to know if, if we're going to stay and move forward, that's all, it's not a contract.
Typically, how we handle this is we give you a, uh, an affirmation of the county. You know, that, that's what we call it, that's what we've always done, unless we're agreeing to a resolution or an ordinance, we just call it a affirmation of the county.
Well, it's nonviolent. But I, you know, I, I have the law, I'm just saying.
If, if you're agreeable to that, we have no problem doing that as well. But understand, we're not agreeing to a, to a contract, so I don't know what level of security that gives you.
So, it, try, I mean, let me try to make this basic. It doesn't matter if we give you a hundred thousand dollars to leave the county, if you go fix money, you go to our county. I'd try to do that.
Right.
If we, if, if the city does not let us, will, will, will allow this agreement to be thirty years this, the loan, I mean, we can go past the, we can go to B, we can talk about that, but just like all contracts, it's, it's a term, in a contract, it may be
that nobody has a problem here with thirty years, so long as all of them are good.
Right?
It's a nuance that's associated with that, that contract, that makes a difference. But they're not going to say, yeah, absolutely, we'll go thirty, thirty years, no matter what, you know, it's, it's just, it's just not going to happen.
But there's contracts, you have a lot of contracts.
Right, all right, so we're going to go through one more one. We're not going to, we're not going to our resolution or a contract, we're just simply getting a fair part of the council, an affirmation from the majority of the council that this is what we like, right? Is that agreeable? Okay. So starting with number one, leave full interest for thirty years. I don't believe anyone has a problem with a thirty year term. All right? Okay. So the FBO writes, I'm assuming to operate the airport as an FBO? Do you think you'd like to elaborate on that at all?
Yeah, I mean, we'll be the fixed base operators, oh, everything out there is, will be under our responsibility, because you have to approve the FBO, otherwise it contradicts the next seat, right?
So you're running the FBO, you're manning the FBO.
Yeah, everything.
Because when I spoke to you two weeks ago, you said you were not doing it. Wow, no, I'm just saying, I mean, okay, I'm, I'm, okay, go through it, keep them, I'll ask questions.
Our common fan will be the FBO, or yes, fan will be the FBO, I want to make sure that the board feels that we are competent enough to manage the Avon Park Airport FBO units. Yes or no?
Yes.
I believe you are, do you anybody have a problem with them being the FBO? Okay. Next.
All right. Pending special counsel approval, does this council want to move forward with airport management under a design, build, finance, operate, and maintain agreement?
Meaning that you would finance the structures, you would maintain the airport, could you leverage?
Yeah, so design, you already have a master plan, we can't tweak that master plan over here in the city of Kirkland.
Right.
As our jumping off.
And still under FAA regulations and DFCs.
Correct, every governing agency.
Right.
Second is the build, we all have a right to find the builders out there. Or if we are a licensed general contractor, we can build out there on some, right, or we build related aspects. For airport management has full authority.
Right. And of course, if you finance something out there, you cannot return it to us with bonds on it or debt on it.
Well, he's talking about FAA builds and stuff, the master plan has to do with our FAA grant and our FBO grant, so that's no money out of us, that comes out of the federal government and the state government.
Correct, because most of that, the FAA will provide that, but it's our responsibility to build, so if they say, on, uh, master plan, they, sorry, I'll have it in front of me, we need a twenty thousand square foot hangar on the runway by P Bravo, it's our responsibility, they're going to give the money to you guys. And then we're going to invoice the city in full for that, whether it's designing fees. I mean.
So we still have to procure the grant, because we are the public entity that is required to do so, so you need us to procure it.
No.
No?
No, we just, y'all have to be aware, that's part of the city representation.
But then, okay, and when it gets to time, you know, and the FAA would be amenable to us not going through a procurement process when it comes to FAA grants.
So, no, so, I mean, you know, we're, we're.
You think Miguel Martinez will be okay with us not going to do it?
I think he could.
No.
As a gentleman, you're talking about.
No, I'm just saying, because if you're wanting me to say yes to this, I have to have assurances from the FAA that says that they're good if you're doing these types of projects with, with tax money that we have no control over, even though we're the ones that are on the hoof port. You just said you were going to build the city and invoice the city.
But it's actually, they, they have, they're going to have to review, whether we come, come up with.
Yeah, I mean.
They have to, to the end of FAA.
So, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to remedy the liability on the city's side.
Don't, with the risks transferred to us.
No, no.
Pending any regulatory authority or special counsel, no.
Pending any regulatory authority, so I mean, for that matter, I mean, you can put on here anything you want, I mean, if we're at all favorable for it, that's which I'm okay with. You know, I'm just saying, we could go through all these hoops with our attorneys, and then, and go to Miguel, or go to Wendy's fans, and say, here you go, and they can say, you know what, you can't do this.
That's why I'm just saying.
Right, so.
Regular authority.
I know, I, I, look, I stepped out for about five minutes there, but I apologize for that. I just want to make sure that when it comes down to the legalities of it, that there's no conflict on the city's side.
There's not a conflict on it, we will have to follow everybody's governance action, whatever that grant proposal is, give it a, a letter. And now, also, I, on your point, I'd like to revert to the memorandum that I, uh, gave to the city. Item number two, Congressional Research Service, Public Private Partnership of Transportation. The federal government exerts influence over the prevalence and structure of E3s through its transportation program funding and regulatory oversight, but it is not a party to the E3 agreement. The FAA is not going to come in here and say. The FAA is not going to come in here and say, I am part of this contract because you, whether it's a municipality, have the authority to issue it. And so that's, and we wanted to, you know, further, uh, federal role in P3's influence project loans through Transportation Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act program. The authorization of private activity bonds. Currently, the city of Avon Park does not have the authority or, or the wherewithal or the resources to put those programs in place. Uh, certain tax provisions, certain tax provisions such as depreciation schedules, state infrastructure things, and the provision of technical advice for the US DOT. So we work for DOT, it's essentially where an owner is rep for this thirty year period, is what is best for his airport. So, no, we can't just do that. But pending on the grant, it may still go to the city of Avon Park first. Let's say we're designing the new runway. I think in the, the budget this year, there's three hundred thousand coming for the design fees, typically too many one would do, okay? We would say, we're now invoicing you for that three hundred thousand, but we still have to follow through with what that, those dollars were done. So it said, if that three hundred thousand is for engineering design review, uh, runway alpha, that's what it has to do.
Only now are to that, I don't want to oversee that.
Exactly.
You guys.
Yeah, and if we, but if we have to have a city, okay, we're going to sit.
Right.
Because your, your finance department, the city management is still going to reflect that on the budget, for some of the grants, not all.
Like I said, pending regulatory authorities, but the council, no.
No problem.
I haven't heard you talk. I didn't, um, when you spoke to him, you know.
Can you speak a little louder?
If you yell through your mouth.
Yeah, oh, I think that a lot. I, I heard you say that you spoke with people individually or, or whatever. Remember, I wasn't a part of that. So I'm really opening my ears to what you said. And I, just like they, they've already said, I appreciate you guys seem to have a lot together. We do need to move forward in this endeavor in, in Avon Park. But again, we need to listen to everything that, that's been said, one by one, A, B, C, D, whatever it is, it comes to some type of conclusion. So, yes.
Um, all right, so back to the, the, sorry, one moment. Okay, okay, all right, so design bill finance, we all agree that we can operate.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we, we all agree that we can maintain?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. We also want to know, we all expect the final closing date for this transaction. Because this is, you know, kind of a quasi, I guess, right? And then one council lead, another council goes, we're flipping the deal forward. Their council is like, well, I gotta do more research on this, offensive attorney, how better to have some attorney, how they get paid. And now, now we're six months down the road and we have to.
Let me ask you one, I have one question concerning, uh, D here. This closing day before April twenty sixth, I've got a deadline for you guys. And then that's what I need to know.
Yes, part of it is because we have to submit a master plan.
I, 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 I have to figure that out. But, so my, I don't have a problem with this one because, uh, you all have deadlines that need to, that you need to make, that we need to, you have to meet again and whatever you do. If this would be a possible date for us.
Yeah, if everything's geared up by them, absolutely no problem. Why, why delay, why intentionally delay?
Got it, okay. So question on that master plan. This is the master plan that you submit to me?
Uh, Governor's office, Senator President Wilson's office, figure that out, how about?
So this has nothing to do with master plan with airport property itself in terms of infrastructure, or this is for more infrastructure?
No, this is for the state's infrastructure and the reserve.
So then the money aside?
Uh, we're worried, the contract, but we will have to spend another fifty thousand dollars, you can see we get one of the contract, another reason why we need to.
We want, we want me to choose our airport that that is going to be the next, uh, week. Yeah.
This one is no objection.
No objection, all right. Uh, all right, so financial management, written user. Um, and maybe these aren't in the right order because we also want to know what profit shares? Do you want to create special funds? When do you expect those profit shares to begin? Can we create special programs? Because when we talked about, uh, almost twenty percent of Avon Park, that was a group, there's nowhere to go, right? Where is the workforce training and, and did our profit share go to that? I mean, we don't have to decide on that today, but what we want to know is, uh, one of your councilmen suggested there's two, three, five, you would escalate one. Right, on the profit share, who wants fan of your four airport management? This is the contract. Now, in the news, before we come back to closing, if we can negotiate, especially with the sub tenants, because we have to be aggressive with green tenants. You can't, again, where is there workforce training? You don't have any, so I need you to concede on about everything you would normally do in your new buildings to improve yourself. But if we are willing to concede, we're at least going to need some sort of profit share for the sub tenants' buildings. Okay, because there's a lot of money that's out there, not just from us, but from our tenants, that's going to be required.
And we would negotiate that once we get, uh, anything in, in, in pocket for us, the law will.
We can negotiate, uh, the funds can come later. What I want to help you with is what, what kind of profit share we don't want to see, when you want to see the profit share happen. Um, because.
You don't want to know that tonight, I believe, because we don't know.
Yeah, that's what they want to know.
Well, partly we do because what we hate to see happen is we go, we hit the closing date, which is a risk on us, but you're like, okay, this is all great, but we're going to need a forty percent profit share. Then we want to deal with the air of buildings.
We're not, we're not going to hit the closing date without, and we can tell you that date that we're going to have, this is what we want for the contract. We're going to go along with it, but soon. Nobody's going to go to the closing date and say, we're going to change the contract now.
Right, but even if it's that, even if we secure council this week and that's, you know, we are third only to say we're going to have forty percent if we really want to see the deal go. It will not be as painful business for us, and therefore, we're only setting ourselves up for failure that will, you know, not work for either party.
Absolutely.
It's all part of the deal, yeah.
Does there any suggestions from council as the defendant?
Well, I just have a preemptive comment regarding profit sharing. I had this conversation with you, we spoke on the phone several weeks ago. You know, we have a lot of empty businesses on Main Street, and I noticed that on the presentation up here, one of the first things that it said up there, it said that it was going to help grow Avon Park Main Street district. So my question is, how are you going to grow the Main Street district when what you're doing is promoting airport and deriving revenue from leases from people that would be missing from the airport? Are you going to pick this is out of Main Street? I mean, I don't understand that whole.
Your, your airport is in San Antonio, right?
Well, it's a, well, but Main Street CRA is separate from the airport, CRA is a totally different district.
Is the mannequin still off?
No.
Um, it's basically not, 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 people staying here, people working here, five minutes from you downtown.
Then that's not where I was going, and I understand that part there, but, okay, we have businesses on Main Street that are empty. So how do we know that when you set up a lease project or a lease fee or rental at the airport that it will compete with our Main Street businesses? And we might have a quite a business for people not wanting to move to Main Street because they've got a better deal at the airport.
It's industrial work.
Well, but wait, wait, no, no, no. And we've talked about this before, changing the designation of the, um, zoning at the airport in order to appease this. So, and outside of events, by the way, is something different.
Okay.
So small businesses on Main Street, that will be an incubator for small business. We're actually, we have to train our workforce, we need workforce, we have to train them, we possibly have to house them and work with our partners to actually get those, get those young kids off the street and into a, into a third party program. Once we train them and they work, work for our third party tenants, they will have jobs. Once they have access to the bio products that are coming out of Avon, no longer does a farmer have to send out their product to get processed. Once that goes out, that's the money leaving your town. People will want to come here because these products are being processed here, open up shops downtown in Main Street where they're going to be using these byproducts from processing and rest of the tenant stuff. So there's no business plan per se in terms of that, I, I mean, you're, you're going off this way and I'm trying to stay right here. You're comparing the Main Street program to industrial. No, what I'm comparing is not losing Main Street businesses and screwing our local business owners or even tenants that haven't been able to rent out their location. And you come in with a lower lease agreement where those people don't want to come to Main Street. It's totally, no, 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 but that's what I don't want to happen here. And so the assurance that you would not be competing.
Absolutely.
With our Main Street businesses and taking them out, right? Or, or having a business because we're also in the process, which we have gotten info on and changing some designation on our Main Street area to M, or like that.
I don't think you'll get that.
Okay, well, you don't think we will, but what assurance do we have that that wouldn't happen?
Well, I think Cleveland, Ohio already did the same thing, it's, uh, definitely worth moving back, and it's not, and it's not worked that well.
No, we're talking like, very like, um, you know, not dirty, tight man, we're talking, you know, building masks, all of this.
So, just to be clear.
That's a small business in our, in our, in our minds, you know, we're not going to be, we're not going to be the makers who can make, making woodwork and, and light industrialists. And, and I would probably want more than one company in your, in your town. One or two, I mean, I think we want like twenty, twenty-five or sixty, sixty businesses down. Of, of course we do, that has, that goes without being said. I just want to, I want to make sure that our empty business on Main Street, Mr. Z, who wants to come down from Ohio and open up a business on Main Street, finds out that he can go get the lease cheaper at the airport, and then that business on Main Street still remains empty. I'm looking at the geological data, the location. I don't want to compete with our local businesses and, and local, um, business owners that have not been able to lease out their property.
So just to be clear.
I, I just hope we all about what happens when owners that operate airports think that their land is what, uh, the same enough, what, what we're thinking. It's, but, but you won't have the fit, you won't have, no one's going to set up shop on our airport, it's a hot dog, and I knew that. True, I'm not going to talk about that. But no one's going to set up shop at a hot, uh, airport, it's a hot dog, or maybe if that was Main Street corner, out there, that's here and it's, it's, it's not that.
So the fence perimeter that we have at the airport, there's a lot of highway frontage property that is not included in what your contract is looking at.
Oh, yeah.
So you're looking at outside the fence that borders Highway sixty-four as well?
Right now, the airport is out of compliance, uh, with FAA because we do not have a fence property. The way based on the domain use. And so this is just another factor of what we can bring, bringing the airport into compliance on little things such as security enforcement. This should have been addressed long ago, but the FAA will, will provide the money to fix that. Because, again, back to safety and security is always the, what they want to see happen. So, uh, yeah, we may have tenants that want, uh, that need that fixed.
So JP, is your intention to have retail based up in?
It's not our intention, but we, we have been approached by, uh, large gyms, uh, but we can also do this. We've been approached by large gyms, they can double as an amenity to the current FBO tenants. All right, so who market as an FBO, why you should come? Do they have access to food, do they have access to leisure? Can they sit in a plane for five hours, can they actually work out in the thing? They, they may not. So there is, there is a problem. I wouldn't say retail.
But could, could we come to some type of agreement that it should not be based off of walk-in traffic, based off of flying traffic at work?
Yeah, aviation related.
Right, so as, as long as you're willing to agree with that, I can't see how it happens.
I mean, there should be some sort of, you have to.
Same, same kind of, it's not a duty, it's, it's technology and, and.
Right. Right, and a lot of businesses have their own, well, like food court.
Yeah, we weren't actually, that's an amenity.
Yeah, there's a thousand people working there, they go eat somehow.
Yeah.
And they don't have time to go out for a restaurant.
Yeah, the FBO has a current kitchen that's supposed to actually be running right now, it's been fine for us.
Right, Bieber Airport has a restaurant, eaten there many times, pretty quick.
So that would be the only walk-in that I could ever imagine to be a partner with somebody.
Business meetings, if those.
Would, would the lease have a set fee for the square footage pricing?
Well, we, we want to look at what the value is that that private business is bringing. Are they going to have to take relocation patterns to get their workforce to actually be able to operate their facilities? Because, well, again, we look at the statistics for Avon Park, that was in the entire city. And so we're going to be forced if we want to bring our employees' jobs to then for people to move, which is also relocation pattern. You know, and so, so ten and eight, who's coming, who's going, what's staying? You know, every deal is going to be, it's going to have its different capital finance structure, going to have its own nuances, it's going to have its own, you know, profit share, they don't have a profit share. It's just, so, uh, I mean, sure, there are, there are market analysis and figure out what their square footage is for, for hanging. But, so, everything will be negotiated on.
But not with us, it will be with the entity that comes to you.
Well, we're here negotiating views.
Okay.
I, I don't have an issue with it, um, you know, personally, as far as the downtown goes, we have a very small number of businesses that are on Main Street that are empty. The businesses that are offered at a reasonable market price are whole. There's not much vacant, empty property that you can do anything with currently under our current zone. Now, if we relax the zone, it could cause big fandom, if you're talking about, you know, a month ago. Yeah, there, there may be more possibility downtown. But as of right now, anybody that wants to lease out their building, as far as I'm aware, has been fairly successful in it. Now, we have another two thousand eight situation. That's going to be a different story. That's going to be through across the board in every district.
By that time, you'll have changed the, why do you?
Hopefully. Okay, so I don't have a problem with it as of right now, anybody else? Okay, move on.
Okay, so, the res- resolutions, we can, we can revisit it, roughly, there is, uh, you, Avon Park, fifteen oh nine here, airport debt, fifteen ten is not airport debt.
Can I, can I stop you? Please, JT, I apologize. I, I, I am so sorry about this, but I really want to take this one if you don't mind.
Yeah, please.
Okay, so, yes, I apologize, this is Casey Roberts, sir. Um, so I, if I can, I don't know if you guys can bring the slides back up, but on the, uh, budgetary slides that you guys provided us that have the highlighted yellow areas, specifically budget fiscal year twenty twenty-one, pages seventy-seven and seventy-eight. Seventy-eight has the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget highlights, uh, which I was mentioning before, talking about the one point eight million. If we go back to that, number five specifically states, and let's, let's, uh, let's identify a couple of things here. Fifteen oh nine is for the sanitation and fifteen ten is for the cleanup. One is an, is a monthly payment and the other one is an annual payment, uh, two completely separate things. Um, but one of them is specifically identified in your guys' twenty twenty-one budget. And it's number five, and it specifically states, reduce general fund payment by forty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars because the CARES Act grant that you guys received paid off the loan. The balance is an annual payment due for the loan, which I see for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one proposed total, you guys have sixteen thousand dollars, which the actual payment is fifteen thousand seven ninety-nine and some change, which I, I believe you guys just rounded up two hundred dollars and called it sixteen grand, and that's what's left for the, uh, yearly payment. So you didn't pay it all off, I, I don't know, that's kind of a question on that one. But what it looks like is it says CARES Act pay, grant paid off loan. Uh, it doesn't say in total, so I'm not sure, but it also says balance is annual payment due. So from what I understand by your guys' budgetary numbers, there's only sixteen thousand dollars left on it, or there's none left on it, depending on whether that CARES Act paid it off completely. Um, that's just one thing, that's just one thing to identify for fifteen ten. Now, I'd like to go back to fifteen oh nine and specifically.
Hold on one second, let, let's see an address, but.
I thought that was ten or seventeen.
It, actually fifteen, fifteen oh nine and fifteen ten are paid even, they want to pay monthly.
Right.
And the.
Are you saying there's three now, there's three?
Well, it was a small loan, sixty thousand dollar one, but I see where he's getting that from because as I pointed out to Danielle here. Probably now, it's in a note, Dane put it in there, it's fifteen oh nine, but it was, it went, you all directed to go to the sixty thousand dollars.
The ten? Four, one.
I don't remember if they were fifteen oh nine, fifteen thousand dollars, but it, it was to go to the sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, so we'll have to verify that for you.
Okay, so I just wanted you guys to, I appreciate it, just be aware of that, that it's in your guys' notes. We got to figure out what's paid off and what's not. It says there CARES Act, I'll let you guys make that decision. Um, I also want to go back to the top portion of it, um, on that same page that has the budget highlights. There's two areas of the last four lines, it says general fund payment, sanitation fund payment, contingency and bad debt. If you look at the general fund payment, that's the, uh, m- monthly sixteen thousand dollar payment that's required. If you look at the general fund payment, that's the uh m- uh monthly sixteen thousand dollar payment that's required or fifteen thousand eight hundred, if you will, uh uh bill, which is why you see reduced to forty-one seventy twenty, uh excuse me, seventy-one or forty-one seven twenty-two and comes out to sixteen. The next one is a sanitation fund payment and that's fifteen oh nine. And per fifteen oh nine, and if, correct me if I'm wrong, but understanding what you guys have going on with fifteen oh nine, it states on fifteen oh nine that a annual payment to the sanitation fund of sixteen thousand nine hundred and ten dollars, starting on budgetary year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. Now, if you look at your guys' actual numbers on your presentation, um that number is actually, you guys have only been paying two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to that every year, not the sixteen thousand dollar payment that you guys said was required per the resolution and that's on the sanitation fund payment line. So that would mean you guys have been, have not been paying it correctly. And that's why I, I know that we talked about, you know, do we want to come to a decision? But they're pretty important decisions. One's four hundred and seventy thousand, the other one's three hundred thousand, and now you're telling us there might be a sixty thousand dollar one. So it's very important to identify who's gonna be paying those and who's it on. Um the sanitation, or excuse me, the ground fill is absolutely an airport problem. But you guys have already brought it up as a, an agenda item tonight because there is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars left to be able to finish that project, which means that it should not fall on us. You already have the monies to do it and you're already gonna be making a decision on what gets done with it. So uh just to identify those two things, fifteen oh nine, fifteen ten, and that's why it's on there because they're pretty important to decide where that money has already gone.
And some of that money has not been spent. Those are loans that are still sitting out that have not been spent, right? Talked about earlier, and we, we get to that. Are these two loans that he's requiring fifteen oh nine and fifteen ten? Have every dime of those loans been spent and we paid it all back? Or some of them still have some capital left in them?
Some still have money left.
Okay, so that, that has not been subtracted out for say Brad Gordon's team. I think he's under the assumption that they will spend that.
No.
Yeah, the money's still sitting in those.
If you look, I understand what you're saying, but they actually created it from what your guys' fifteen oh nine, I believe it is states. You guys created an enterprise fund with it, which means that money came out of the, of another fund into the enterprise fund, specifically for the sanitation purposes of the four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Now, I, I haven't seen that anywhere and you're right, that may be not true, that you guys only transferred a hundred thousand, which is why you're only making a two thousand dollar payment instead of the sixteen thousand that the rest of the resolution recommended. I'm just letting you guys see that on our end, from your documents, that's what it's telling us. So it, it might need to be looked at a little bit closer. We need to get some hard numbers because that was part of our due diligence.
So Mark, we have a way of giving guarantee after all?
If you have the resolutions in front of you, they state that the sanitation fund loan was for airport operations that they have not been able to cover on their own. It was for airport related items.
But was it spent?
Not all of it, no.
Right, so that's what we need to know.
And then the, the same thing for the containment. The containment's gonna come up on the later agenda item, um and you, I give you a, a balance on what's left on that.
So for the other, the other two funds, we need to know how much has been spent on that.
Okay, I can do that on sanitation. You already have the one for the general fund for the.
And then the sixty thousand, because that's what it.
That's the separate, there is a separate resolution that was provided to you that is for the loan on a building. The, the balance left on that one has for four years, eight, four-year payments left. There was sixty-three thousand, we used thirty thousand towards the um from the CARES Act grant to go towards that building. It has not been posted yet. We're still trying to get clarification if I can do it as an extra payment. If I can, it'll leave the balance at seventeen thousand left.
And I'm, it's actually another small care grant possibly.
Yes.
Hopefully you.
Yes, I completed an app, uh, uh pre-application for thirteen thousand for another CARES Act type grant from FAA.
Okay, so for the sake of meeting tonight, I guess what they're asking is if in fact there is money that the airport has spent that's still owed, is the city willing to forgive that? Or are we going to try to stick it with the bank? Right?
That's right.
Okay, so that's what the council needs, right? Now. I don't know. Something we're meaningful to or not?
I think that uh one of my ideas was to start uh mature and profit. Let's say after year number one or eighteen months. We need to start doing some revenue tax. And if we can increase our revenue by forgiving these loans and we define the contract as a guarantee of minimum payment or a percentage service greater than profit. I think I might want to go in that direction. So that we know we got a fixed amount of money coming in at minimum, starting after the first year of sales. And forgive these loans, but some of them seem like they're broken, left of, if they thought they were, maybe less than what we thought they were, but there's still funds there. Well, why don't we take care of that business on our own and then negotiate profit sharing? We're gonna give them a percent, a percentage, a tagline is on the table, whether it's four percent, five percent, with a guaranteed minimum, so that no matter what, we know the airport's gonna walk the way fifty or a hundred thousand dollars profit every year. We can do something like that, but I think that that way we know that we have made a good choice. We don't want to make the money, if we're not necessarily doing it right now. And then they perform the way they say they want to perform. We have the ability to turn them out and increase that by tenfold in the future. That's my idea.
But that money has to stay there and you can't use it for anything else. So you know, we're be profiting off of an airport that we can't spend the money on unless we kept the piece of, of the airport ourselves.
Okay. But I need to find a way to do that off.
Well, you can pay those off if you're still making revenue off of anything, so return on investment. Then what are we gonna do with that money? They're gonna come back and say, well, we want you to be invested over here and then it goes right back to another level.
Yeah, I mean, the, the return on investment is the same as, as the future. Return on investment is the infrastructure that we built. That's the thirty-year term.
What Jim is saying, that you'd like to see some revenue coming to the city, but what I'm saying is that that money won't come to the city. It's gonna stay at the airport. So if they're running the airport and managing it and everything, then whatever we are going to make off of it, will go right back to them. So.
That's the how, what, how the bottom line, we're gonna, the city will make money off of it.
Well, no, because it all comes back to the airport.
The city makes money off of the building, the filter, the effort.
And I'm. And yeah, and also, I mean, and they're saying that they would take those revenues if there was a profit that was derived from that, that you would put that into some program for workforce training or put it into a program to, you know, send some kids to aviation training mechanic school or whatever, that sort of thing. I mean, I'm just throwing it off.
And all of them wanted to have to go somewhere. And the FAA does not, does allow that they can go to an outside program. Because this was information I don't know, the latest progress.
So you're saying like a nonprofit, if you go to any nonprofit? Well, I would prefer that if, if we're talking about economic development, why not make an economic development at the airport? You know, why would, why wouldn't you be giving it to any other nonprofit? I mean, you've mentioned the homeless coalition, so that.
Okay, no, 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 okay. He mentioned it, so I'm just bringing it up.
Because right now, there is no workforce, so it's the chicken and the egg. You cannot go out there and hire people without any knowledge of how to, how to do our specialty. We're gonna have to do something that I don't look for a model and that's obviously. Whether we create the program or we take the funds that needs to be, it's gonna be training that has to have this element.
We're not gonna do. So I'm just trying to figure out, like Jim said, if there's gonna be a return on the investment that we would expect for you to compensate our taxpayers for, where would that money go? Would it go to the airport or would it go to the program? We haven't defined that yet.
Mark, so.
No, they're saying it go to the airport, they don't want plastic blade, they want to all.
And if I'm not mistaken, any revenue that is made on, on airport has to stay in an airport enterprise fund and only be spent at the airport. So yes, classic lighting would work, classic lighting would work if they don't take it. Yes.
Yeah, and you would certainly need money there.
If you need a sponsor. What do you want? Put our marketing on the wall.
So there, there technically is airport property that we could still use that money for if it's something that's not part of their contract, if they're not willing to take that.
And, and by the way, you do realize that the mower flex is part of the airport? So what's gonna happen to the mower flex?
Well, a vertical asset that has been recommended is all the, uh, any of the rents that are paying.
So in terms of the contracting that is currently with the mower flex, for example, you guys would be dealing with those individuals?
Yes.
And not the city?
Correct. This is a good buffer on, on, if they're good tenants or bad, I, you know, we have, we're, we're slow. Um whatever their current lease is, we'll honor their current lease. If anybody's gonna visit on their insurance or anything that we are required by governing authorities that they're required to have, then they will.
There's one thing that I would like to see added to this that's not been mentioned and I know that we discussed it just briefly. When I was on the phone with you, right now, the only access to the airport that's paid is the one in front of the terminal building. And if this is truly a partnership with the county in economic development, there should be a road elsewhere coming on the highway six, off of sixty-four for what you explained in the last meeting, that you're really gonna have a huge trucking operation with the hemp. So, you know, there's no turn lane out there, there's no other access to the airport other than the terminal building. It's gonna destroy that road. I don't know how thick that asphalt is, but at what point can we see whether or not there would be another access point to the airport for that?
You bring up a great point, back to the safety issue. When we look at your airport as a whole, it has several weaknesses and challenges. One of the biggest unsafe things that that airport has is ingress and egress. Whether it's for trucking companies for us or the general public going in, there are people driving on your runway right now. Okay, there's no perimeter route. We only have a residential access and one commercial access. One, you know, just part of our, our overall goal of why you bring the birds and privilege. There's now EPTOCS and we look at that because they need it water and supplies to your city in a safe manner. But when we look and try to evaluate a profit share with the city and they go apart, there are very, there are challenges that will cost them. Have to be given to get them into compliance, so that these uh grant agencies look at us as actually somebody competent enough to look at safety issues on the airport and to look at, you know, uh safety and security of that airport. So it doesn't have nothing to do with our trucks, you know, maybe it has to do with, you know, you have a two-lane road, the EPTOCS, the import program, sure, you can buy one for it. But that the city have the depth of the bandwidth that costs to be armed out, meaning of why that works. I mean, just why, why that was makes it explain, if they didn't extend that in a while, I'll never know.
The H R T P O plan does not designate any expansion or widening of that roof.
Well, and that's because there hasn't been value to it, that the state has that to do. They're saying that, that it's worth spending the money on because there's not enough, there's not enough, there's nothing going on. So why is the standard coming in maybe seven figures on, on local traffic?
I guess the question is, let's say that you start having a lot of traffic out there and making roads last. What are you gonna do about it? Is, do you, do you think that there's a foreseeable plan to actually get that fixed? Is that something that the city would then have to shell out money for? How do you see that coming?
I see your force uh, I think there, that's a F P O too, all they want, they not recent.
And as far as time horizon, is that something that's like one, two years or that's been fifteen years?
It's actually one to two years, a perimeter load, so people will stop driving on the road. That is a huge problem, which we didn't say, I guess we didn't go on another, but.
Alright, so we still have a couple of things that we didn't answer, we can sort of talk around it. Um the actual debt that's out there, we did not decide as a council, didn't want to forgive that, not forgive that, prolong it, make it part of a profit sharing, what do we want to do with that?
You know, exactly, I was talking, we don't have a bottom line number right now. So I think we don't get an idea of what that is. You know?
But uh now that I think about it, there's uh one way the city would profit is by then paying off the loan. That's not forgiven. If you go over the payment, I know, then that's in the profit for the city right off the bat, correct? They paid off the loan, that's from the back in the airport, that money was given to the, to the back of the city. But the city's the one that loaned it, own that money. So I think we're part of off loan that direction than to uh forgive the loan. Now that one got a different aspect, so.
Can you repeat that, Jim, because I've been following, you're not speaking about.
What I'm saying is before, if we forgave the loan, then all the profits that they had in the future would stay with the airport. But if we turn around and don't forgive the loan, and we allow them to pay off the resolutions nine and ten, that's money that the city gave to the airport so that they could do a cleanup and so that they could continue to run. So that money would actually come back to the city by then paying the city back the loan. So I think we'd be better served by going in that direction.
So one thing, either way you play that one, um you basically have a total amount of eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars roughly as maximum, probably less than that, money that has been spent. So if you add up how much money the plastic blade is going to need and how much money in every year that's been bought over the years, I guarantee you probably going to the same amount over a long period of time, you're gonna want to clean the heck of a lot of it. Either way you play, you're probably gonna get the same amount of money out. So what's your idea? I'm not saying I have an idea, I'm just saying either way you go, you're probably the same way. Okay?
Well, you know, you asked me a question. It makes me anxious, but why would they want to pay off our loan?
I understand, I, I know that I wouldn't.
I would need those.
We don't want to, uh, we don't feel like we're bringing over a million dollars in your budget, you know? Can't just snap our fingers and just call it.
Yeah. Yeah, and I mean, just so we're clear, the main value that I see obviously is that team is going to go out there and throw actually try building enhancements at the airport. But it's those enhancements that I see as a true benefit. Because if you go out there and spend fifty million dollars worth of buildings, now that's our fifty million dollars, it's really thirty years. So.
I mean, it will be partly made by our private financing, uh whatever the capital side.
And hopefully you made fifty billions in profit. And I, that's great.
So, yeah, let me ask you a question. So can we say for moving on purposes that uh residents uh pick nine and ten to be discussed uh upon uh special counsel review or future discussion upon a, a council?
Well, I would doubt if the council's gonna have a problem, you know, kicking the cans in that community if it comes down to. Are we uh?
So, so they're roughly eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And so if you want us to pay that, then we need to know within the profit share we have, we contribute that, right? Or if you wanted the threshold, the first offer was fifty thousand, right?
I like hundred thousand.
Alright, but whatever that offer is, you know, and we've made that over the minimum there because you're gonna allow us eight years to pay that. Right? And at least we know what's going on, instead of pay the fifty thousand, do a profit share and by the way, we have eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars in debt.
They have high water pay.
Yeah, correct. And so we want to be absolutely clear that if you want us to pay that, then we want us to trust that, you know, over the, the course of the next five years. That'll be the minimum payment we will.
Would the council be meaningful to simply having them pay the debt over the course of the thirty years, Tim?
I would.
Alright. So, are you, are you, are you?
I'll give you another chance. I'm gonna hear, I'm gonna hear. Well, I will say this, if you divided over thirty years, it's twenty-five thousand dollars. But we also need to also, please, I, I beg the council to remember that we still have to ban, we still have to stop. We still have to, our capital is at risk. And so we, we, as long as we can finance, we can. Same if we go to the municipal funding or have the government about the office, we're gonna want a forty, fifty year notice. Now, even though our lease will not extend to forty, fifty years, though, we can't pay it like a full payment at that time or renew our lease for another thirty years or wherever we're at at that time. But uh, you know.
Well, there's sufficient cash flow right now with the lease of loan. Not how much you can do to make, I mean, I know you're looking at that as part of your revenue, but there's cash flow that you need up first to start out, out to gate, to be the electric bill and all of that.
It's not real, not, that's probably been in the business.
Well, with the rent, it's gonna be low.
I've done one, there's no rent.
You're right, but we're at this.
No, I'm not, I mean, if, you know, if they bring in long leases, that's on there as well. I'm just saying, you know, that it's, it's not as dire as it looks, because there is cash flow. I have one question i- in regards to this, and I know that we're trying to get through this whole thing here, but I'm just hypothetically speaking, do you really need the hemp components to the airport management? What does hemp bring in terms of other than loans with USDA? But, you know, an airport management firm, you know, we're trying to figure out ways you're gonna bring in all this industry and stuff like that. Is it one hundred percent, I mean, where does hemp fit into the big picture of you can run the airport without hemp right now? Is it one hundred percent, I mean, where does hemp fit into the big picture of you can run the airport without hemp right now?
Yes.
Right, and that's what I'm getting at.
So that comes to the point because we have an obligation and a civic duty to provide innovative technologies.
Yeah, and I, I get all that, but if hemp falls through, let's just say USDA, there's a hemp plant, uh, five years from now, and then you can't meet your obligations with whatever agreement they have and then all, who knows, I'm just saying. The greeting of hemp, and I don't know, but, you know, the, some, uh, natural force that we cannot control. If hemp is the reliant factor of having airport management, you know, then you're relying on that one thing to, to, to move forward. And I, I don't know how diversified it would be at some point if hemp wasn't the only thing out there. I'm just, this is, you know, a philosophical question perhaps, but.
You know, uh, I don't try to be too strict with what I call it, because expectations is a pretty good thing to be, and, you know.
But when you're on the hook with this much money and this much infrastructure, we are on the hook as well. So, I mean, you have to have some kind of, you know, guarantee, how are you?
How are you?
In which way?
Well, we have a USDA guarantee on all, any and all our loans, how are you going to be able to go? Also, if the airport is making revenue, why is the city giving funding, moving general funds into the airport?
So the reason why I asked, sir.
I don't understand.
The, okay, can I, okay, the reason why I'm asking is because when I met you the very first time, I asked a question, what happens if in five years this doesn't work? And your head person said, we will go ahead and give it to the bank, and then it would be between you and the bank, or we'll find another buyer to do that. Okay, that had stuck with me.
So that is when, you know, when, when we were, go, we're gonna let us keep the real estate. And so if we have the real estate, there will be a mortgage on that property, okay? They will have to be satisfied, whether or not we're about to do it with that mortgage or that debt for the last. And that's why we went to get the long-term funding with the USDA. Whatever they don't cover, it's outside of one of our subtenants, the FAA provider. So.
And that's a question that the special counsel obviously will, will respond to.
And one other thing, what happens to Highland Aviation? Because his ownership of the land out there is a little quirky compared to what you're looking at the entire airport.
We ain't got nothing to do with auto aviation, they legally have, I mean, I have not other top property title search, so it's something along the line. Like, we're not here to interrupt, so.
No, but I'd like to make sure that, you know, he has access, whatnot, and all, whatever he needs. If he's got a little air manager, can he be dealing with you? Or what he'd be dealing with us since the land is not being part of your property?
He'd be dealing with us, but he, he doesn't, he's in a unique position because he owns that money, he doesn't have to answer that. I mean, if he's building a structure, right, on there, it, it's our responsibility to make sure that, that builds. Right, if he needs insurance, our responsibility to make sure that he. But as long as it's operating, listen, there's a, there's a thing called quiet and joint. As long as he's doing what he's supposed, what he's supposed to do, I mean, he's got access to that property whenever he wants. Now, we can go through that security, so we'll actually, we'll know who's on the property, if he's not on the property. Because apparently everybody in the world has access to the airport, which they should. But the FAA is not like not knowing what plans are going, going on right with this. Uh, we don't even, you know, buy them.
And I think I'd, I'd be agreeable to our position, if we, if that's thirty years or if it's fifty years. I think that sounds more reasonable, because of four or fifty thousand dollars a year, fifty years.
Starting when, starting after year one? After year one? You had a remote?
Uh, so that would, so assuming it, uh, the eight hundred and thirty thousand.
Why not keep the current schedule we have? It's less, it's less than thirty years.
Yeah, but it's not before we melt, some of that money has not been studied yet, it's just sitting there.
Yeah, we're, we're fine at this point, if you don't know what the final number is.
We're available to fifty thousand dollars a year minimum payment. We have a likely year or two, right, I mean, we have, we have to give this up. There has to be, we have to get a plan yet, you know, it's not that we don't have a plan, but we also.
Yeah, I mean, realistically, to, to build out any fat ability plan et cetera, I would think three years probably more relative to that.
I will say that most of our, even our USDA, they will not even charge us. Our lenders are not charging us for it, because we know that we have a lot of costs associated with that. After year three, they only charge us all our money, in principle, they don't even start to charge us anything.
So, council, at this point, agreeable to fifteen years, starting in three years?
I, I think three years. I think, do you think you could do it three years, right? I'm just going.
Mayor, mayor, this is, this is Casey Roberts. I, I have a proposal, and it's, if that, if fifteen-ten is really down to only sixteen grand left for the year of twenty-twenty-one, would you guys be amenable, and the reason I brought up the two thousand dollars for fifteen oh nine, I'll, I'll get to that, but, how about just forgiving all of fifteen-ten, it's done and over with, you're only, if there's only sixteen grand left in it, just forgive that and be done with it? Move on to the, the other loan that you guys are only making two thousand dollars a year payment on, when per year resolution, you're supposed to be making sixteen. If we could stick with that two thousand dollars and make that payment, it doesn't, it doesn't put you guys out of any, anything for the period we have it. And that means that you guys didn't lose anything because we made that two thousand dollar payment. It's, so it's amending what resolution you already have that you guys haven't been following and only doing the two thousand dollar payment. Let us take that on, the two thousand dollar a year payment, and then once we get, we get going, we can finish paying off the whole piece of it, and that amends to the whole fifty thousand a year piece. Now it's just deciding on, is, is that gonna be acceptable on top of the profit, profit sharing? Or is, are you gonna want a fifty thousand dollar profit plus the two thousand dollars? And then the whole shebang, once we, uh, get to a, a conclusion of being able to fully pay it off. Are we gonna be able to negotiate, okay, well, if we're gonna pay this completely off this year, we're gonna reduce the profit share by this much because we're taking care of the whole thing?
First, first of all, the sixteen thousand dollars you're referring to is for the mortgage, not fif- uh, fifteen dash ten. You're, you're talking about something completely different.
The, I'm just stating what's on your guys' document, it says fifteen-ten, so if it's for something else, then, then you guys mislabeled it, and I don't know what you're talking about, but it's specifically.
We, we want to verify the numbers, so at our next meeting, we're going to verify those numbers that we can be sure we don't have to get, obviously, too complex or unfortunate. So we can't really negotiate that type of deal until we are sure we're number, okay?
We agree, but yes, it is cheap, you, what you're looking at, the CPA who wrote those notes, put it down, says the fifteen-ten, that was that thirty thousand dollars, which is a parent's grant going towards the sixty thousand dollars mortgage.
Okay, so at this point, is council agreeable, fifteen years, starting in three?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
You know, you already have a majority, um, for two, you all are for three, so it's a consensus, we've got three.
Alright, alright. Alright, so the debt issue is taken care of. Moving on to the, uh, current future building assets remaining in City of Baymont Park, I think everybody's pretty clear on that, or you know, clarify.
Um, in regards to the future buildings that you build, you're saying those come back to us?
Yes.
So are they gonna be depreciated to the point where they need a lot of repair, or we're gonna have to go in and repair them after thirty years?
It would be good for it. So.
It just needs to be clarified, the policy here, we want to make sure.
There are degradation algorithms out there that are performed by experts, real estate experts. I cannot answer that question for you. What I can say is that, uh, I mean, we have other reasons to be there on a daily basis and operating, and we are not gonna let any turn into the DuMont building. Yeah, there's no more terror of the force of the facility, but.
And DuMont said the same thing. So that's why I just have to bring it up, we want to make sure that what we end up with is not something that we're gonna have to end up cleaning up, fixing up, code enforcement, code enforcement, you know?
Yeah, I can just draw a picture for you.
Right, right, but not, uh, you know, hopefully not on year twenty-nine.
Yeah, so so long as the structures are held up code, uh, there's, there's not gonna be any. Now, granted, the structures can probably be there, the equipment that you use, yes, that stuff will work. You have coolers and vent towers and yada, 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 all, all.
In the contract, would you have a, I know you have a national plan that you want to do in terms of improvements and stuff to the airport, but would you have a, a scope of where you're gonna be placing things, such as, um, you talked about using some of the land for ag, that there might be a potential of planting hemp at the airport?
Alright. No. Here's the thing, if we're to do it, and I do not want to get into our subtenants right now, let's go back to these again. We are not trying to disclose our proprietary technology as much as we want, I, or, I mean, so if we have a backup or overhaul, it would look a lot like lanes out there where you already have. It's not gonna be some sort of road craft, we actually have.
And that's okay, that's okay, I just want to make sure that that is where you go with that. Because in the contract, it said that you had unfettered allowability to use the land what you saw fit without any input from the city.
Then the government authority.
Right, and but we're not the government that will get authorized with that, it would be up to you and FAA and other governments. We, city council would have no say, we have, we have a, we have a clause in there that says, uh, you will have.
That's part of the city representative, keep going.
Representative, but, um, in that, we said we would submit all of our drawings at a thirty, at a thirty percent security set. So you aren't gonna know what we're doing up there. But we will have no say on whether or not we, we want to. Well, if, if we're having meetings, it would surely be thirty percent, or five, that's probably not. It's not gonna be worth it, so. But if it's.
You will have, you will have our input.
I understand that, and that's a good. It's gonna, it's gonna have to, it's gonna go through meetings, and then we are, or. And that's a good safe comment to make, but at the end of the day, if the contract is specific that you have unfettered use of the airport, that you really have no say whether you bring it to us at ten percent, thirty, forty, or fifty, it doesn't matter. I'm just trying to clarify that upfront, so that when the neighbors across the street or the people that live behind there have lots of noise or whatnot, they're not coming to the city and blaming us. In the contract, if you could write your.
But so they will, right.
In the contract, you will be allowed to write your specifics to, to outline what your concerns are. If we can narrow those concerns down, then we can get specific, but it's, I mean, we're following in the, in the emergency technology, urgent. Which takes me back, which takes me back to my original comment. Would you be able to have a map of the delineated area where you intend on putting your, I don't even know what example you're gonna put on it. These are where the buildings are gonna go, this is where the roads are gonna be, and this is a review where possibly our greenhouses could be, I mean, that's, that's part of, that's part of the FAA department. Yeah, that was my question, that we have to.
Yeah, so we have to comply, uh, that was a big national question.
Yes.
It's gonna have to change, we may have to have it changed. You know, land needs change, but you're paying.
And the land needs change would only come from the council, the pretty old ones that can make land changes. Or it would have come to us or planning and zoning board, right?
Yeah, they're all so. I mean, if we wanted to grow outdoors, the zoning board would allow under industrial.
I know that, but if you have ag, it goes into a different area there too, and it's not zoning for ag.
It's zone for industrial, or is it that? It's a girl.
We can get water. Okay, hold on.
Yeah, alright.
I ask that because we own the water plant on the airport property, what happens to that water?
We're not taking over it.
No, 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 but it's on the airport property.
So you will have access to do whatever you need to do at the water plant, I'm not a water. I don't know what's your question, if we require water use at a level that impacts the city. We are responsible to coordinate with the local, uh, city for building company, we are responsible to coordinate with the FAA. We are responsible to coordinate with software water management, get a well permanent. There's a process for everything that we're doing, and we have.
Alright. Now for the real stickler, the, uh, special counsel. So on here, we have fan contribution and City of Baymont Park contribution. How much are you guys proposing percentage based? Total dollar cap?
So, uh, I, I mean, I would be very shocked to see this go to twenty-five thousand dollars. And I'm not trying to devalue any part, because we have all the long-term charges of twenty-five thousand dollars. My point being is that this is a lease contract that we have. And then, as a vendor contract, even if we, uh, the, uh, the individual camper, he raised a hundred and fifty dollars now, right? He would not need a hundred hours to do that, that is a ton of grit. So, you know, we can up our sensitivity to contributions, if they're absolutely needed, if they don't have the money and the floor, I would really don't go away that closing, because then we know what I'm saying, I don't believe that, uh, you know, that's not what I said, but, uh, we, you definitely would have a cap, and, you know, how much do y'all want to do? I don't know, you know?
There's suggestions from the council?
You're not gonna like my, but I'm gonna bring it up anyway. There was a consultant in here by the name of Frederick Lawrence, and I hope you all got to meet his interview, but he probably has that such experience of all of you guys in the army. He worked under Nixon, he was part of the walkers, he studied terrorism, he saved, and all that, and he ranked out this currently, the guy that's monitoring and kept, so, the, um, Blades Airport down in New York County, because of him, they are. Um, he also, you know, he has no financial benefit, but he manages all of the players.
What's the proposal?
The proposal is, this guy, on a monthly basis, I believe, what, what, five thousand dollars a year? And what he does, he's familiar with USDA, he knows all the same people that you know, I've probably got the same ones that you know, if you say, you know, everybody in the state and all that, so. The proposal is, I'd like to have this report come in and do a thorough review vetting of the entire project and the agreements, that's what he's gonna do all the time.
He's not an attorney?
He's not an attorney.
How was that?
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying. Well, but the thing about it is that he has reviewed these agreements at long, you know, in his past life, and he's the one that brings up the Blades Airport problem that they had with these old, direct, uh, sugar.
Yeah, right.
But anyway, I'm just throwing it out there, I think that we have a great value for this individual that can ask all the questions that we don't know how to ask, that we wouldn't have to pay six hundred and fifty dollars to someone to have their assistant research something that this guy could do, he already knows it. And then he hired a lawyer, which get all the little facts, let him be the guy that's looking out for the city, he's very pro-business, I know you're saying no.
No, I would be hiring consultants, I mean, everything is free, you can ask the FAA, FAA, you can ask the Congress, you know, any of these authorities, and it's their duty to provide that information.
But the FAA isn't gonna come in here and look at this contract now, they're gonna wait until we've done it, give the lawyer, but then they're gonna come. They're not doing anything right now.
So then if the city is looking to hire a consultant, say, let the city hire a consultant.
Exactly, I would just, you know, what, 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 you have to talk about it. Because, I mean, I know that, uh, uh, you were saying yourself, I mean, the airport, the attorneys do different things, I forgot what that was, that something to do with providing their information or help with something. Um, I just like the idea of having someone that's been doing this all my life, that's just me.
I would rather see a proposal of the percentage split between the city and fam before we decide on an attorney. And then we will decide on an attorney, it could be him, it could be anyone, it could be someone they suggest, but it's part of the split, it's what we need to decide tonight.
That's why I threw it out.
That's not a split.
If, if you, if you hire a foreman, you want to, you want to, like, that's what they're seeing paid for. I think you should, I said, if you hire a foreman for, for, then I, I think you're right, I think that's something you should pay for yourself. But the attorney, I think you have adequate funds to get you at some point where you are at that, mainly the, 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 like, practice, like, all these other.
So tonight, because.
You can't, you can't really hire someone, like, we need to have a process.
I, I know, my question is, so tonight, since we all went through the, for tonight, on this subject here, that, that they have, this stuff, and we have agreed to all of this, so now, so the thing now is to say, to let them know that we want to, or don't want to move forward and negotiate in this contract with this public agency, is that what?
Yeah, I think you, I think you need to let them know, that if you want to, or, that if you go through the details of, with this, that it, it's like, and we're showing on paper.
And, and my thought is also is that, that we, when we decide to move forward with this public agency, then it would be up to this council to decide on an attorney or a consultant. My thought with that is, I prefer an attorney versus a consultant.
Yeah, so I, I would move that as well.
Okay.
And, and I, but I, I would say you really need to do a quick. And, and I, but I, I would say you really need to do it quickly, because otherwise you're not going to make their, their April. And the attorney's going to have to find through this. And so your selection process, like I said, I, maybe, maybe you want to call a special, you can do it. But, you know, um, we have right now three possibilities. Um, and, and I, I looked at, I looked at the ones that they suggested. Um, might throw you a fourth one out of that.
Greatly. Uh, one other thing I forgot to add. The three that was, uh, attorneys that was presented to us, this is what you found?
Well, no, two, two. Two, and there's the third one that's coming in St. Stephen. It's actually, they didn't recommend them, but he actually, they actually cited these materials.
The what?
Peter Hirsch, basically, um, uh, they cited the material, but he came in after the meeting. So he wasn't part of the presentation, he was the two. The third before that that dropped out because of the contract. But now we have three that I've, that I've, that I've selected, you asked me to run, it's like people on, it's like this. And it may be a fourth out of the, the three that they, they sort of, they, uh, uh, heard. Uh, I'm, I'll call, I'm not, I wasn't there, their information, I think they're pulling it out. How much?
So again, on the background, the, the percentage split, what is their proposal to be?
What did you say? Did you take them out on a recommendation? Oh, how we did.
Six, sixty-four.
Were any of the numbers? I would say one would mean sixty, sixty-four.
Sixty-four, eight-four, what was that for now?
The, the percentage split of the, the legal fee.
Well, they were fighting on seventy-seven dollars.
If you're very godlike, you know, that. You know, they, they, uh, you want to simplify this with the news, but it's more than that.
I'm okay with fifty-fifty. I, I agree with him. I think that we can show our face as well. As you're saying, you're doing it, and we want to give it a shot. I'm okay with that. I mean, I know you guys came unsolicited and all that, but I'm going to move forward next now. Are you all okay with that?
Fifty-fifty?
No.
Yeah, can we?
Yeah, that's, we're saying that.
I would like a cap.
We don't know the limit, but what that's.
There needs to be a cap, we need a cap.
There you go.
Otherwise, you know. Attorney or attorney, it doesn't matter. But so I recommend that we do not exceed the point thousand dollars. So, so fifty-fifty, we'll contribute ten, Dr. thirty-ten.
That sounds good.
Hey, fine. So, uh, as far as.
I'd like to negotiate.
As far as selecting, we need to have a special meeting so we can get this done quickly. So with next Monday, if you'd like. It's PM.
So is that, is that what people like to? Where are you looking today? I, I have all the.
Why am I not sad? I'm just kidding. Because I won't be here, that's why.
Yeah, that's.
So obviously, any recommendations that you guys have for attorneys who need to be sent to the city manager?
We do, we've seen all the moments, and, uh, rest here, probably not. No, we're not.
Yep, just simply saying if you have more.
Do we have more?
I sent them.
They were experts on.
Are we any, are we beholden to board lists?
Oh, we're not.
Because if it's thirty, fifty, fifty, then you will be able to also.
Those names are, those names have already been sent to areas.
Okay, and if they have any more, they can send them to you before. All right.
So.
So.
Monday, we'll be the first. First of all.
Yep. Very good. Monday at sixteen PM.
We need to be here.
You can zoom in, anybody. That's the idea. Well, that's the idea, it's to select a special counsel.
Well, I mean, if you're going to select the counsel, you're already in agreement that we're going to have a mutual beneficial, we can still. All we have to do is hire over there, that's what they need. Um, we don't, but, you know, all problems.
Yeah, no.
Because he probably knows four of them, and I think we'll do out all of this.
Yeah, well, we saw it, we saw the attorney recommendation. Again, the only thing that we ask is, again, can you strive to honor NDA and what is proprietary information technology while they're going through this?
You're going to have a left, but I would never expect you all to say for somebody to put a, put their own, just market other people. And I think that would be, I'm not sure.
And obviously, you'll have the list ahead of time, so the attorney on there that you refuse to work with, well, I mean, let's not.
Sorry.
All right, is there anything else? At this point? We good? Oh, my goodness. I don't know what to do with myself.
Thank you all for coming.
Uh, yeah. We can take a little break. All right. We are now back in conversation. Jerry, we have, uh, a woman on the phone from, uh, the environmental cleanup team. Are you okay if we loop her up? All right, thank you. Item number eight is the Avon Park Municipal Airport Environmental Cleanup. That's Catherine Embiid with ECT. Is she still on Zoom?
Yes, I'm still here.
All right.
You're welcome. Thank you for this opportunity. Um, would you like me to go through the PowerPoint, or did you have a chance to review it and have any questions?
Let's very quickly, just give us a breakdown of how we got here and what our problem base is.
Okay, we were hired in two thousand fifteen to conduct, um, assessment activities out there at the airport. Um, the pool industries hanger operated an engine testing and repair company at that portion of the airport. They had an engine test wrap that had outdoor, on an outdoor concrete pad with oil staining, concrete, and the surrounding soil. Um, in April two thousand fifteen, the city of Avon Park removed that concrete slab and excavated that soil in that area. In that, um, you could see on the figure, the soil impact figure, there is the black hashtag area that was the excavation Avon Park conducted. And then FDP, um, subsequently after that, wanted side assessment conducted. And that's where we kept doing step-out soil samples and more, um, impacted soils were found with arsenic. And as you see on the soil impact map today, the orange outlines were excavations done in, um, let's see, March of two thousand eighteen. And then the blue line is what's being proposed today. Um, if you go, and then the groundwater impact, there is some groundwater impact, but it's very, very low concentrations. The cleanup target level, according to the state, is ten micrograms per liter. And as you can see, it's like fifteen point five, thirteen point three. It hovers around between eleven and fifteen. And at one time, all the wells were clean. So we haven't been out there for three years to test the groundwater. Um, we would like to go out to, since it's been several years, to test it, to see where we're at today. Fingers crossed, it'd be nice that it naturally attenuated on its own. And if we could get two consecutive groundwater samples, um, a minimum of three months apart with below ten, then we can get the groundwater closure from the state and be done with any type of groundwater monitoring or cleanup. So, um, regarding the soils, we have two options of, let me backtrack a little bit. FDP is requesting some sort of renewal action plan. And we propose four different types of plans in the PowerPoint. Cleanup option one is unrestricted land use, where if you see N one A, where we go ahead and remove all arsenic impacted soils exceeding commercial industrial levels as well as residential. And, um, then there's no annual operating cost to maintain anything after that. Fingers crossed, we get closure and all the sidewalls are clean. Um, then option one B is only going and removing the commercial impacts and then do a soil blending of the remaining, collecting soil samples. And fingers crossed, hopefully, those would all be clean, so we can get a clean closure and close the, the project with FDP. Then cleanup option two is restricted land use. That's where two A, we come in and you put engineering controls down. Either one with a two-foot clean fill over that area. And then you have land restrictions. You can never put a daycare facility, build a daycare facility there. You can never build a school or a home on that portion of the property. Um, and then if there's still groundwater contamination, then you would not be able to install any wells, total wells, irrigation wells on that part of the property. So those would be your land restrictions. Um, option two B is to pave over that area. Same thing, you still have the same land restrictions that apply. You have to do annual inspections of those areas to make sure that if you choose this option, to make sure the clean fill is good, or if you went the pavement op, option, to make sure there's no cracks and no repairs needed. And, and you keep that and doing that until the impacts have been removed. So that can go on for many, many years with an estimated annual operating cost anywhere between two to four thousand dollars a year.
How much was that again? Per year?
Two, four thousand.
You're welcome. Any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
On option two A, what is the safe distance, uh, that you could put a well? You said that you could not, you couldn't put a well on that property, but how far off that property are you talking? Foot or a thousand feet or a mile?
It's a great question. Um, we would have to discuss that with FDP, um, but it would, at least several hundred feet away.
Do we have any existing wells that are within that several hundred feet?
I mean, the problem about putting, essentially putting a well off there as well. Although, um, something you have to think about is, you have wells out there, you know, already have a grid. How for provision for well, well, for influence?
That's one, trying to figure out. Okay, uh, so you mentioned that you needed to go out there and check the groundwater. What is the cost to simply check the groundwater?
Um.
And while you're. While you're thinking that, is that a DEP requirement for right now, or is that just something you're suggesting?
It's something I'm suggesting. It's not a DEP requirement right now. They will most likely require it, though, when we put in our, we put, submit our remedial action plan.
Which happens when?
It's due by June of this year.
Okay. Did you give a reference price on to check the well?
Just to check the groundwater, if we were to come out there in the next month, it would be two thousand or less.
Is that for site or for everything?
For everything, just to go out there and do a round of groundwater sampling and, and prepare a report.
I'm assuming this is something that our on-wark people not check for. All right, well, I guess, uh, my main question would be, what is the prohibition around that site? Um, if there's, you know, if it's somewhat small, it's going to be an industrial site for the foreseeable future. I don't think we're ever going to build a home there. Old school or school, so. If, if the prohibition is, you know, one or two hundred feet, then obviously, that doesn't really restrict the airport a whole lot. If it's two thousand feet, well, a big problem. And then we would just need to know where our wells are located to that. If it's already putting us in a problem. I don't think anybody's, uh, excited about a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollar bill. Also, um, I'm not sure how the procurement of this company works. Uh, is this a estimate for a fee? Is this something that you put out for bid? How does that work?
We're talking about them, uh, ECT?
Yeah.
They're already under with us.
You still have a contract with them?
Pretty sure we do.
What I'm saying, I don't know what's involved with taking the soil out, but is that something that a city worker could do with our own equipment? That costs us a lot less. It was something you'd hire a different company for that we have to talk.
No, it's not. Is that more like to the class one landfill, or is that to do like?
We used Cedar Trail for the landfill last year, or when they did the first excavation.
So they were subcontracted out by then, or did we go out and see Cedar Trail?
Uh, that I don't know. I just know they're two paid.
Yeah, that's who we paid on.
The first excavation was conducted by Avon Park, not by ECT.
Right.
There was the first report that was done that determined the examination. Sorry, there was a, a report that was done prior to ECT that, um, determined that there are two, that there were two contaminated spots on the airport property.
And we did those.
We had a company do it for us. Another, it was Hartland Pump and Tanks that did the first analysis.
So Miss Embiid, your, your services are strictly the environmental reviews. You're not doing excavation. You don't do that part. All you do is environmental, um, study and sampling and things like that, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So would you be monitoring anyone that goes out there to excavate and then to go back in and do more sample studies?
Yes, ma'am. Yes. So if you were to hire and do in-house again, then, um, to save costs and do the excavation, then we can come out and do the monitoring and the sidewall samples for. Monitoring and the sidewall samples for confirmation.
Do you know if we can take this contaminant to Cedar Trails again, or will we have to take it to a Alabama site as?
Yeah, um, you would need to contact Cedar Trails to make sure they will accept the material. According to their permit requirements for recycling or disposal or whatever.
That's something our staff can do. Okay.
So what the master, so so we have to do this happen before we decide what one is going to do?
It would appear to me that that's true, that we need to find out, is it in the groundwater still? If it's not in the groundwater, then basically we can use more often. But if it is in the groundwater, then if I'm understanding Catherine right, it's probably gonna be further things to happen.
If it's still in the groundwater, then we'll have to do mo- groundwater monitoring. Quarterly, semi annually or annually, whatever FDP will approve.
Yeah, how deep are you monitoring?
Only fifteen feet.
Okay.
I believe the depth of of the wells, they're shallow, they're not deep.
Okay.
Well, then I say once you go. Would we have to, could we just go head on and just to know the contaminants are there? Possible or sit wealthy, go ahead and say, let's just clean it up. And pay for the cleanup?
That's why I asked if we can take it to Cedar Trail or not and see if we have to hire them to do it, or if we could actually do it ourselves. Because the cost must be pretty expensive, so. We didn't know how much the cost savings would be involved, if we do it ourselves, we're hiring it out, so trying to figure that out.
Ms. Emi, does the um environmental people, do they have a timeframe on when this has to get done, I mean, if we did it ourselves, and I think what was it sixteen times or eighteen times? Does it all have to be done like all at the same time, or could you like phase it out depending on our staff did it, or they couldn't do it all at once, how does that work?
We can phase it out, as long as they, the agency knows we're working with them and we're addressing the issue. Um, we can phase it out.
It is, I think it's something that we can do. Right, there's a lot of options to that. We just need to find out, is is there a site local where we can take it to, or is it something we have to contract, all the different sites, so they want.
One thing to keep in mind, when you phase it out, then you accrue more mobilization fees. For each time travel going back and forth, starting and stopping the project.
Right, okay, are there any more questions for Catherine?
I got one, go ahead. I'm trying to phase Catherine, could we do like the commercial industrial one? Like a phase one to get that out of there, seems a lot smaller and of more concern.
Yes, we can do like a phase one, just uh only remove the commercial industrial sequences. And then you can do a phase two and either do a blending or remove the residential.
Okay, because the main concern is the commercial industrial, right, I mean, both are concern, but that's the major.
That's the big concern, yes.
There's, I don't remember looking at when we talked about the four or five small areas, that we could probably take care of that ourselves.
Yes, and they are smaller areas.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good.
No, if what you're saying is on the the smaller ones, that you don't need to go to dump that someplace else, we can find.
We have to find out.
Okay, so that all, okay.
Pretty much won't know anything until we talk to you. They're gonna do that at their earliest convenience. All right, is there any more questions for Catherine? Thank you, thank you very much Catherine.
You're welcome, have a good evening.
We'll be in a good thing. All right, item number five. Mr. Jerry Wise has uh given us a proposal for lease of the Avon Park Airport. Jerry is here. Answer any more questions. Very excited about it after three and three hour and something meeting so far. All right, just if I had a chance to take a look at this, is there anything you'd like to lead off with or?
Uh, Jerry Wise, I only know him, I learned that person, I've worked with him twenty two years, he's got about forty two years of experience in maybe. And uh I've got the one airport around him, and I've also run my own down there, worked for about twenty years, but never near as large as they on part. Oh. I guess the gist of this thing is that they basically fixed before the lease. Uh, when it comes back down, you all have to.
Really, yeah.
It's pretty much, you know, it's the ability to be there with the manpower I have already in staff. And then to, you know, to find money, to find a value, and since they didn't have sixty, they don't have a value to spend, they may just find stuff that they're not about. They won't be available after five, they're able to do it. Second, is uh on that, you know, it's a little bit of a curve. I'm thinking to me, that's one to, you know, go around and one week service, just coming and wants to leave, but we're gonna do that as we will, to make sure it plays out, not you. And then um. Then we'll be responsible for the maintenance, that's what I can bring up. Uh, making sure that all the rent is for the, like, all the hangers. Uh, that's an incentive that uh would be the main uh view of the airport management, if it's a bit of a thing.
Three. No. Four, four.
I'm trying to.
The city's utilizing utilizing four.
So we got the fourth thing, and the three, uh, seven. Eighty hangers, you know, I don't know, how's the revenue from the city coming? Is it just being forgiven?
For the hangers the city utilizes, one is rented from the utilities department, the other two are. Yeah, one of them is actually utilized for the airport mowing equipment, so it's airport.
Oh, I want a hundred percent of that, because you got everything that we're getting. Fuel farm, uh, we'll be, we, we, I'll take responsibility, I'll leave it. For the sale of both jet A and out gas, and provide a, propose fifty percent, a ten cent dollar flow fee to the city. And uh, the jet A truck, I think I thought, we, we, the mayor about that, we probably have to work out a different setup of the own jet A truck. And uh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure if there's money airborne or whatever, but we just have to work something out on that, I don't know, with Matt on it, to be able to make these uh. Models of, of, oh, the own jet truck. Responsible for all the insurance that we're dealing aircraft, that's probably about five, six thousand dollars a year, pretty. That was because of Avon Park, that was a division of the industry. Uh, with this minor maintenance on the. On the hangers, you know, lack of change, flipping the hangers, flipping the hangers. Repair it, that's two thousand dollars a year on the hang. Uh. Um, there's not a lot of maintenance to those hangers, other than, you know, like, mother maker had to do with it all the time, but. I just want to be sure to go around and make sure that everybody is satisfied, you know, frequenting the. Of the taxiways through the hangers, kind of get that loose gravel off the ground out there in the spring. And just make it into a general place where everybody's happy to be in. And uh, you know, I would, that might be, provide the train personnel, the own jet A truck, and who's doing the fueling. We want to offer a self-service if they want to, but we will have a representative of. At the pump, they have somebody on the shield, but it's out gas part of it. And we'll have somebody on the truck manager, the big guy. The. The fuel system for the loading of jets, some of that big tank. And I guess at the time, we, you know, everybody was trying to think about self-service, but these people who thought he. You know, all that million dollar debt and wearing scrum legs, he's not gonna drive a few others to do it. They don't, they get, they expect service from somebody to do it, and that's, that's what we can learn. On the grounds of, we agreed to put a load pretty big, we didn't know what that is. Uh, I figured out, I'm, I've got an ag background, it's on farm, but I don't know what it is. Uh, but I buy my own tractor, do my own bowling, it's a lawn mower that's deep on ground, and they do that, you know, all day and night. With, again, with, you know, just anybody can, just gotta stay a better track, and I live fast, but. And that's, the only way to do that is to have a destiny that will all come through. And then, as the city has in the past, you know. The more somewhere else, grass at airport, we know, and the grass somewhere else, we know, and the sky, for the airport, it's impossible. That was the limit. We'll do minor maintenance on the fence of the gate, uh. I know there's problems with the gate entrance all the time, so uh, which is, I could talk to some people and and I would. Put a three thousand dollar bill after fixing the gate, how many things we've been, we've been lacking on. Put down a pretty, pretty good post at airport these days, other than lighting, coming from the face of my path in life, and traveling on that thing. That's called the.
Jerry, I have a quick question for you. Um, I mean, obviously you sat down through that entire meeting, I don't want you to feel like do your presentation, you need points to make, I think you deserve the. Dedication and time and respect that you're trying to provide us. I know that we advertised for us to put out an FDR manager, it's like a year and a half ago. Can I ask, I mean, did you ever consider doing it then, because that would take people that have.
Well, I did, but he was on somebody on South.
At that time, we did, it was just out there.
I just, what I did was on South.
Now, well, there was a time when we tried to get an FDR, and we did a trade out, actually. Um, the other thing is, um. What would you do with your hanger? I mean, would you keep your?
I still operate.
You still operate?
I still operate, yeah. I got a, my office personnel, my secretary and and uh. And my family and stuff like that, we would actually move my office back to the airport, and she would run up, up positions. Uh, our flying was not, as a green, people aren't how to live with green, and and it's important that everyone looks, but I. We're not doing nowhere near as much time for the work back in two thousand fifteen, probably about forty percent. Uh, moving that, we're doing about forty percent of that much flying, sixty percent left. But where's your balance, man, when I came over here in twenty eighteen, and I knew we'd be a one airplane operator, and that's all I had to do, but they were in the green, grew up, and then. It went crazy, and I was, you know, I was talking about airplanes at that time, just leaving farms and grow it in this area. And uh, now that the, they've changed up and going through the, up in other nutrition, through the water systems and stuff. And the apparel applications and businesses down, that we're doing, still doing nutrition, trades on, on city, but. Again, I don't know if we're gonna do that, but I've got spare time on my hands.
So do you purchase the air pool from the air pool that's in Avon Park right now?
No. I've got a.
Okay.
Well, we got eight thousand gallons, same, over at these places, companies over there. The, the reason for it is, I purchased fuel. For Agnews, with a twenty one cent back, it doesn't, it probably took a year for that. And that's, I can buy fuel, the last one of fuel I bought was a dollar eighty two. And I paid the company two fifty, but I, I said, any amount, in order for me to be competitive, I have to invest thirty to twenty nine cents to do it.
So do you see yourself, I mean, again, the competition that we have right now is the promise of economic development that fam is. Portrayed bring to Avon Park, that component was missing from your business plan, wouldn't it?
I'm gonna grow on it, because there are.
Yeah. Well, it's a, it would be any contact.
Honestly, I can get to, you know, like, both hours, I would manage one here. The vision is always probably four more people, managing none of the airport at the next, now. Pardon me?
And who would pay for that?
Oh, I would, I'd pay.
Let me ask you a question, what, what, if, if we wanted to, um. Rent the airport to you, lease the airport to you, what's your plan for uh bringing businesses to the airport? In the developed.
Well, I'm not into it. That airport is Main Street, Avon Park, by air. And if, if somebody like you or somebody like, whoever's wanting to relocate to the industry, this group, playing big and fine. The first thing they're gonna look after is that airport, because the industry, they're talking about bringing here, they don't travel about small airplanes, they travel about this. An employee, two thousand people, four thousand people like they're talking about do, they're coming to this, they're not coming on for one second to. The yard here, but, so while I would be bringing to the table, would be maintaining my airport, making it dump, and that service would be, to this, but the work, that stops there. And people start helping out of it.
Wait a minute, you missed me, what gift are you speaking about, the ones that come in now or the ones that are potential, uh, fam, potential to bring you?
I know back when, when the kids were running the airport, there was a lot of jet traffic in there buying fuel, and it's been called a service. Avon Park is uniquely positioned in the middle of the state. The west coast over here, where you get state, and east coast over here, where you get state, they travel right over the top of Avon Park. If I'm selling fuel, three dollars a gallon cheaper than they can sell the fuel over on, or they're selling it over there, they're gonna stop the fuel. So that's where the debts are going to stop, and once you get the social media, love, you get the.
People are gonna do all that, that's.
That's me, yes, that, that's my thought, I'm not asking y'all to do it, I'm gonna grow the airport, so. And one of the biggest complaints that we've always had at the airport, uh, since we haven't had a full-time fueler, is the lack of fuel, yeah. It is to my advantage, I'm not gonna make any money off the hangers, it's to my advantage to sell fuel.
Okay, so how is the city making?
City's gonna get forty percent of the rent, and then they're gonna get a ten cent flow of fuel on the fuel.
And that will, that will suffice the economic development for the city to remain online, I would say.
Well, based on, based on, we probably feel set up for the last year, you're gonna generate probably a hundred thousand dollars a year, that money factory, and perhaps some, that's a hundred thousand put in here.
And right now, they're promising six fifty thousand dollars a year, starting now, for the year, for the, right, so they have ringing for. Oh, I know that.
No, they're saying they will, they're saying they will, they're saying they will, let me, I wanted you to speak a little bit about. Uh, CD, uh, the, the, uh, CD big old, the, the marijuana, or vein. In my hometown, there's uh. Four growers that think growing this in the last five years, it's not a new thing to do, they're struggling with it, because the. You're facing the pharmaceutical industry with this growth, or not growth, with this oil or on, or whatever you wanna call it. So it's, it's hard for this. So it's, it's hard for this, because of the, the money that the pharmaceuticals, versus what they kind of do with organic, um, deal here, it's hard for them to do it, to tell over.
But you know, and they're not here to explain that away, but the specific reason I asked on whether or not help was integral to their business plan, the answer was no. Um, they don't, it's not their, their airport management and economic development to bring new businesses to the airport, which would be the forte, I think, and, and other types of, of investments that they apparently have in their stores looking to do. I mean, look, if UPS showed up today and they said, you wanna turn your airport into a PSI, I, I can, you know, but for right now, I think, at least from my point of view, um, this was an unsolicited business that came to the city of Avon Park in a deep moment that we've had deep now for, what, seven, eight years? And finally a year that we decided that we wanted to hire an airport manager, fam, here they are. Um, and so this is just, I'm favorable towards them only because they're promising the economic development component and they have huge amounts of people behind them to do that. And apparently the expert of the city knows everybody, so he could be able to bring everyone here. So I'm gonna hold them to that, you know? I mean, you made comments like that, that you know everybody and have the inside truth, then I'm gonna rely on this, not whose truthfulness on that. So I'm, I'm just saying.
Let me ask you this. How many acres are available for development?
Well, we have three hundred acres out there altogether, what's for development would be depending on whatever plan they provide us. Uh, they're talking about using outside the fence as well.
You see the, you have a map, I know that, that.
Yeah.
You see how many acres that the runway is?
Yeah.
And you see how many acres is left out there, that, that there's. Only way that you're gonna get the money that they're talking about, I don't know what they do, they're, they're, they got about twenty-seven acres they can build on. And if they're gonna build kind of industry, we're talking about, they gotta have parking there. So.
And which is why the request that is from me, and I was hoping that the resident council would agree, was that they were gonna give us some kind of a layout of where they're gonna put their commercial industrial area, where, you know, the raw land will be. There's only then, I mean.
Do y'all have an investment park?
Well, the goal would be that they would turn it into something like that, wouldn't it?
But, you know, there's only so much land out there that they can do. There's only, you know, like, you're standing in the runway, the runway is far like that. That's what I'm saying. That you buy more property?
No, I mean, I know, I know, but no.
Yeah.
Right. But in terms of comparison, I, I, this isn't even apples to apples, I think.
Oh, no, but I, no, but I.
Then what, what they have going for them is something that you don't have, which is they've got a line of credit of, of, I don't know how many millions of dollars with this.
Right, so grants.
Right, but I mean, it's also on loans that they would be assuming the risk on, you know, on, on all loans with U S D A. So I, I'm, I'm more in favor of leaning towards their services at this point only because, you know, they just sound more promising to me. And that's just me, I don't know how the resident council feels, I don't want you to, you know.
Well, I know, I'm like David.
Right.
At the same time. I think if I was this council, I would really do my own research.
Well, and I think that's what we're hiring people for, but what I could tell you is this, that as far as I know, they still don't have staff for the airport. They're going to do it because they don't know where they are. And perhaps you would be the perfect person to manage the airport for them, because I don't think any of them are gonna be there as much as you would be there on a daily basis. And, you know, from the relationship standpoint, you know, you know the airport probably like the palm of your hand more so than they do. So, you know.
Yes, I'm making a statement.
Pardon me?
That's, that's the reason I've said what I said about, uh, being able to build buildings out there.
Yeah.
That property is not there. You don't have that much property out there to do what they're talking about doing.
Which again, is gonna come back to them, because they're supposed to provide us with a layout of exactly what they're gonna do with it. So if it ends up being that they cannot put it out there once they do their research, then, you know, we'll talk again, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think at this point, we have to flush it out and see.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand that, I wouldn't expect that.
Right.
Yeah.
So after we've pursued and flushed out what's there, what's not there, if it's not something meant to go, then we're gonna go to the alternative, who's the only other person to give us an alternative at this point, so.
And I really appreciate you doing that, I think that you bring a lot of value to what you say, and I'm not just saying that because you're here. But again, I think you deserve as much respect and consideration as anyone else wanting to come and do something for the city, you know?
And just like Maria was saying before, almost two years ago, we had a person out there that was going to be the F D O. It didn't work out.
No.
Had you been there at that time with this offer, there you go, let's do it. Well, you know, circumstances, but, um, I mean, live with it.
And I appreciate the fact that you can believe that, that you can do it. And I think that there's a lot to be said for that as well, no one else has had the, the ult to do that, so I appreciate your, your.
I think it's a bit unrealistic, uh, realistic. I think we should probably, in the future, we should feel that.
I agree with you.
I think, I think, uh, proper opportunity and at all times, uh, small airplanes, throw about there, pump six and seven gallons, ten gallons at a time into the airport. The air roads go down here, it could be seven thousand, thousand, but you need some division on, on, and when you need somebody there, when I pulled up the gate, I walked out.
Right.
And then you go around, you say, uh, pump that gas, well, you have to make sure the ground is a good, good. Just send them around.
Yeah. So my thought on that is like, I, I prefer the basic, the, 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 that the city of Avon Park out of the, the, as far as the airport is. For the, for, for, why I say that is that right now we spend, we are proposing to establish a lot of money for, uh, airport, very, 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 um, that could be spent somewhere else in the city of Avon Park.
Right.
So, so my thought is that if we release, you know, thanks to the Avon Park, make a land, when we release the property to someone or an agency that will take us out of the picture and still manage it and do what's best for the city of Avon Park will be more feasible to me. I can't see, uh, if that, just, your proposal from what I see, there would be the city of Avon Park, there's a little what we're doing.
And lastly, yeah, and the other part also, I mean, they're looking at me all, getting rid of Kim and Born. We would no longer be dealing with consultants and doors would still us relying on Kim and Born and F A A and F D O P and all that. And they're, they're not trying to knock anyone, I don't believe them, I'm just saying that fam is looking to do all of those things. I think that, you know, from the marketing standpoint, there's no funding in there for that, um, and we still haven't discussed the funding and the marketing person for the rest of Avon Park. Um, I don't wanna be relying on one entity to do it all, but that's another conversation. But, um, I, 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 at this point, Jerry, like I said, appreciating coming up, you know, I don't know how the resident council feels, but my heart right now is that the other entity is supposed to flesh out what we're doing with them. If it doesn't work out, maybe we'll have this conversation again and after April, we'll, it'll be, it'll be, April twenty-sixth. I just wish you would have done this a year and a half ago, I just wish you would do.
I wish I would have.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Wise, you mentioned that you were a former company owner in that corporate, April. Are the company not already formed?
No, that will be separate from my flying service.
Will be separate from your flying?
Right, I've got an ag flying service incorporated, it's incorporated to the agri focus, third.
Okay.
Operating from the park on third, so. This would have to be a new company, a L C R name, or whatever, and A O B A was identified for the airport, but I forget my just, that was the name.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's, I just have to say, it was not gonna happen, it was not, it took a couple of months to do it. That's kidding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On the resolution twenty twenty dash oh one, any, 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 or action necessary there? Out of number seven, we have the minutes from February eighth, twenty twenty-one, council, regular council meeting.
I make a motion to approve and it is a very good.
We have a motion on second, any changes or questions?
I have one, but the team's already done to sign, but we need to bring up this page to say long down, when the regular up to the city manager says parking green, should they pardon?
Says what?
It says, it says parking green, should they pardon?
It don't work, I have a megaphone.
Yeah, actually, we pass them out. We're just changing the parking word to parking green.
All right, no further questions, we'll call a roll.
Councilman Gray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Yes.
Governor.
Yes. Yes. Thank you, we have a resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh three, definitely for the virtual.
Resolution, the city council, Avon Park, former, trying to transfer the title of the equal building to this main street, Avon Park, corner of, uh, Avon Park four, and the, uh, Avon Park, you know, the A C C R A to the city of Avon Park, by the operation here, the same, only the office is, is, almost, the, the.
We make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one, that's three on five.
Second.
We have a motion on second, and we wish, in a C R A meeting, acceptance title. Is that further questions, we'll call a roll.
Councilman Gray, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Out of number ten, we have the purchase of two F one fifty pickup trucks from water crew for Rick, who's not on doing so.
No, he's on here, I said, but, but, these are, and the capital improvement plan is created, budgeted, it actually come in for about one hundred and sixteen dollars, eight, two hundred and thirty-two dollars, will cover the budget. Use money from operating to cover that.
Okay. Any questions about the F one fifty pickup truck? Nothing, no more to do, why don't we do that? We have a motion on second, any further questions, we'll call a roll.
Councilwoman Gray, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Out of number eleven, purchase of F one fifty pickup truck for sanitation supervisor.
This is a truck also that was budgeted, this one came in for about two thousand dollars.
And by the way, all these trucks are people that we have employed, they're not like pending to get employed.
Correct, that's what we did. In fact, we just, we just will be hiring our second stormwater. You met Anthony, Anthony's driving around Hopefield.
I wasn't saying that, I wasn't trying to talk over.
No, that's it. We have a motion on second, any further questions or comments? Being on call a roll.
Councilwoman Gray, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Out of number twelve, councilman Gray requesting, we want to be at L E O spring conference. Brenda?
Yes, I would see the email on, on the, on the, like, copy. Um, they're having a conference in March, and I would like to attend that, and the registration fee, I think, is a hundred fifty dollars. And stay overnight at the, um, hotel. And they also said that in the event that the conference is, um, not in person, that they will do a Zoom. And I, and if that's the case, I would be, will just pay the registration fee and go hotel fee, and I will attend Zoom and so on.
Any questions, Brenda? We have a motion on second. We have a motion on second.
We tied, I tied this up with.
Did you pick one? All right, we have a motion on second, is that further questions, we'll call a roll.
Councilwoman Gray, yes.
Councilwoman Johnson, yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Out of number thirteen, city manager update. Oh, the paper already been, been done, you know, the wild building, got the fencing up, Gibson, part of that, they're going to start Sunday, this week, on Tuesday and Friday, starting demo, we have it down in a few days, they have forty days. The church service center Friday, we had a really nice meeting with Tom Finery and Rick Hayes, very good, had a drawing, um, of it was quite a bit under the five percent, he was asked to stay up over, under, on it, and we were supervisor, director, and a layout of the building, so they're gonna go back and have it back any time, we can, okay?
Anything else?
Uh, just quick one on the grants, we had a, uh, conference call, um, Carl who was on, Gibson was, um, Timmy Clark. Rick, uh, Whalen, I think Tim was on it, I was on it, Corbett was on it. As far as, uh, infrastructure grants, it was informal that, um, Corbett heard about it from someone in K P O. And he said, we didn't get it, and that there's two more chances, no date's out, and we talked about what we could do, we talked about this off of one stormwater. There's other thought, Carl had some ideas, but we found out farther, farther from Corbett. Um, we'll meet after that. I did ask Corbett if he represented other municipalities or counties, he said he did, I asked if they received any.
Can we, yeah, can we get a copy of what Sebring submitted to see why they were so successful compared to why ours weren't?
Well, you're talking about the hard thing, I don't know if they're on their infrastructure, I don't believe, I went on to take the find, but Corbett said that, that's actually done and put out. On the infrastructure, we just got it informally told. If the one that you saw, probably the last I did, where Sebring got numerous things, that was in the hard.
That was, that's where they got one.
And that went in and they hired Chris Fox.
I support your group.
That's Carl, that's, Carl worked on it.
Okay, wait a minute, that, uh, let me just pass, I saw on the paper that economic development, that you've got a contract out with all the words, and somebody else that's, that, that, that. They need that, apply for one of those.
On what, they've got one for demo and building. That's what I know, and actually I have Andy and Rick working on it, I got a call from Megan. Available, we were told the first time the building actually that people sell, and they can, they can work on it, but it's a new, one that I bought in August.
Okay.
Put it for sale, yeah, in front of the wild. Put it for sale sign in front of the wild, but now you saw my, my.
That was the one from Enterprise Board, is that what, yeah, that's the one that, and Ms. Thomas said that everybody. I think that's it.
I think that's true.
Yeah.
Any help?
Megan did, and all.
Um, I put in, sent you these, a little packet of, um, I put in your seats a little packet of, um, grant information that came from Corbett and Antonio on the rehab grant. There's a list on there, inspections that have been done, the ones that are still needing to be done, and there's also the votes for the, um, contract. For your, you, like.
So what is the asterisk for, um, the thirteen oh nine, thirteen oh five, are you going to?
I don't know, and I sent an email over to Corbett and Antonio, they asked me what, I hope they actually, they're asking, and I said I didn't, so I will find out.
Those addresses, you probably, you probably would think too, and you would follow it, I haven't heard any.
No, they were bogus, um, they were bogus, what it was, was the resident applied for thirteen, applied for one of them and no one lives in that house.
Right.
And, um, yes, and then, um, it came out that she had a fly port hoping to move her son. Now, the rules are very specific, you have to be owner occupied, and she lived in the house next floor. Turns out that both houses own the same strat number. So you have to be the owner that lives in it, she applied for the one that's vacant, it hasn't had utilities, it hasn't had anything for years, so no one lived in that house. She applied for that one and we only approved. And we, we approved it not knowing that no one was living in there. So in my eyes, it is. In my eyes, it is ineligible because she applied for something that was, she wasn't living in it at the time, and the rules were very specific, so. I spoke to, um. A lot of people called me on this, all I can tell you is that, you know, for people that didn't get in. You know, it's, it's a thing of, it's a matter of fairness, so.
So it was bogus.
Well, yeah, I don't know if it was bogus or not, but I think the intent, whether she was gonna stay in the house that she's currently in and always, and then she was going to have a family member moved into the one that was, she would put in fix. Considering that she was number three on the list, it was likely would be a whole rebuild. But again, I mean, what would have been ideal was that someone had to have been living in there, it should have had its own strap number, or, you know, there was just a lot of use.
So it was a health field, um, um.
Yeah.
Still on one lot.
Right, what happened was originally she and her husband lived in this one, and then habitat built this one for her, they never separated the tiles. She applied for this one over here that was empty, no utilities, only garbage. Um, but yet still live in the habitat home, had no desire to move in this one, instead she was gonna have family members move in it, and that's not how we ran it.
Right.
I would be, so, uh, it was my contention that if the application. And, and knowing that she applied for it for her family member, right there disqualifies the fact that she purposely did it. You know, maybe she didn't understand the whole concept, but we only approved. You know, we already did the approvals of houses that were owner occupied, that's not owner occupied, and that means we need some of this, because we apply the next time we allow them. And it's not like we moved one and all. Right, right.
To be clear, we don't, we don't make those.
We make decisions based off of the information provided to us by the consultant.
The consultant has to vet it.
Well, I'm telling you right now, if the application was done, uh, purposely misleading, then someone has to make a decision, particularly if the consultant does that. But at the end of the day, um, the chief's still on the list. So does that mean that it's? You know, and it's.
What I'm, what I'm getting at is do we need to ask our consultant now, why are they still on the list?
Yeah.
I, I was assuming that's why they, I tend to know, I guess, we probably, I'm sorry, but, um, assuming I brought it, and ask that, that Corbett sent an email, telling me this guy.
Right.
Well, you know, what I'd like to do is if it ends up being that, that she gets funded based off of the consultant's review, then, you know, I'd like to see that in writing, and I'd like to get a copy of her application. Because if it shows that there was a, look, you can't read ignorance when you know you want to do this, so.
Agreed.
I, I, I sympathize with her plight, but at the same time, you know.
Anything else in the good city? I would like to go on record, is that though we were talking last, is not the reason that we are here, after ten o'clock. Want to point that out?
One more thing.
I'm taking a motion to adjourn, being in opposition, we are adjourned.